Good evening and welcome to your city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 20th, 2018, and it is 7:00 PM. Regular city council meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM in council chambers at City Hall. And we are delighted there are so many residents here today, in fact, so many that there are quite a few that are blocking the aisles that need to be kept clear per fire code. So you will be asked to move. If you are blocking an aisle, please cooperate, or better yet, please move before you're asked. Are there any seats left in the overflow room, or any room there? Okay, well, we will try to make this go as smoothly as possible, but please do keep the aisles clear. City Clerk Gomez, can you please call and roll?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lindholm?
Here.
Councilmember Davies?
Here.
Councilmember Minigar?
Present.
Mayor Protem Jennings?
Here.
And Mayor Genaway?
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Chaplain Serena Cummins of the Orange County Sheriff's Department to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Cub Scout Pack 734 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, what a privilege it is to serve you, to come before you openly in prayer, and to worship you as we choose. May we never take that freedom for granted. We invite your presence here with us right now. As the mayor and the city council members gather here this evening, I ask for your hand to be upon the decisions and the discussions set before them. I pray for wisdom, respect, cooperation, understanding. I pray for open hearts and open minds. Please continue to watch over the families that call Laguna Nigal their home, and continue to use this city for the greater good. Your word tells us that victory is won through many advisors. Therefore, I thank you for each person involved in the city's council meeting, and may the discussions that happen here this evening be fruitful and productive, and more than anything, may your peace fill this place. It's in your name we pray, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Cub Scout Pack 734 Color Guard advance. Please place, please place your hand over your heart. Those in uniform and veterans salute. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance to our nation flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the flag which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. And two.
Okay, boys, stay right there, we'll be right down.
Audience, you may be seated.
Great job, boys. Weren't they excellent? Very good. We are so proud to have you here at City Hall, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You know, that's a very important thing in our country, to start our government meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. So thank you for starting it for us. And do we have all the troop leaders down here? Yes, we do, okay. I have something very special for the troop leaders in recognition of your volunteer spirit. Laguna Nigal was built on volunteers with a commitment to community and excellence in service. So thank you for what you do for these boys. And I'm sure we have some parents who'd like to step forward and snap some pictures, so please don't be shy. Please tell us your name, and then we'll start with the boys, and we'll go this way. Tell us your name, your grade, and what school you go to. Okay, my name is Carrie Enzer, and I am the pack leader.
I'm Cruz, and I go to Community Roots Academy, and I'm in second grade.
I'm Nefo, and I go to Community Roots Academy, and I'm in second grade.
I am Luca, and I am, and I go to DJ's.
I am Ezra, and I go to DJ's.
I am Zane Enzer, and I go to Community Roots Academy, or otherwise known as CRA, and I'm third grade.
My name is Noah, and I go to Community Roots Academy in third grade.
My name is Ravi, I go to Community Roots Academy, and I'm in third grade.
My name is Leighton Wolf, and I go to Community Roots Academy, and I'm in third grade.
My name is Brayden McCray, and I go to Community Roots Academy, and I'm in third grade.
My name is AJ Burns, and I go to AVCS in third grade.
My name is Tarun, and I go to Don Juan Avila in third grade.
Fantastic, thank you, boys. Yes. Okay, so who's going to dismiss the troop? Who's going to dismiss the troop?
Dismiss.
Thank you. Thank you, boys. Yes, with so many people here, they wanted to stay up a little longer today, so that was great. Thank you, boys, for starting off our meeting. For the next presentation, I'm actually going to ask Councilmember Minigar to do the honors.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the City of Laguna Nigal, I would like to read this resolution honoring Persian New Year No Ruz. Whereas for several thousand years, many people have celebrated the Persian New Year known as No Ruz on the first day of spring, when the sun crosses the celestial equator in the northern hemisphere, and the length of the day and night are the same. And whereas the commencement of this holiday symbolizes the affirmation of life in harmony with nature, celebrating an awareness of the inseparable link between constructive labor and natural cycles of renewal. And whereas No Ruz continues to be a significant celebration of the Persian community in the early years, this holiday was marked by religious activities in the morning with entertainment and feasting later in the day for the light to defeat the darkness. And whereas, I promise you, this is one before the last, more recent traditions surrounding this holiday including, include enjoying nature and the great outdoors, feasting with family members and friends, arranging seasonal displays in the home, and wishing for a brighter future. And whereas, the City of Laguna Nigal, in honor of the beautiful history of our Persian community, will mark the coming of spring by celebrating No Ruz, promoting intercultural understanding, and encouraging mutual respect, and universal acceptance of cultural diversity now therefore be resolved at the City of Laguna Nigal. City Council honors and signifies March 20, 2018, as the beginning of No Ruz, and encourages Laguna Nigal residents to share and enjoy the traditions, values, and beliefs that surround this holiday with their family members and friends. Signed by all four of my colleagues in the City Council. On Saturday, I'm sorry, on Sunday, along with other mayors of Orange County, I'll be in Irvine to present this as a special reception, and then later on, I'll be at the City of Beverly Hills and City of Los Angeles to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Minigar, for presenting that on our behalf. Okay, our next presentation is in recognition of the Aliso Nigal High School marching band, color guard, and drum line. At this time, I would like to ask David Weinberg, Director of Bands and Color Guard, to come forward for the presentation. Is David Weinberg here? Okay, making his way up.
Well, first off, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dave Weinberg. I am the Director of Bands at Aliso Nigal High School. And I'd like to say hello to Mayor Elaine Getaway, Mayor Protem John Mark Jennings, and the council. And I want to thank you very much for giving an opportunity to honor our students. Our marching band this year has won the Southern California Marching Band Championships for the second time in a row. We compete in the Southern California Band and Orchestra Association, and there's 30 bands in our division. We competed in six tournaments, and at each tournament, we won sweepstakes for first place, and overall had the highest score in the history of Southern California in the 3A division. I'd like to just take a real quick minute to introduce a few of our student leaders here. I have Jemmen Ru, Brennan Liu, Matthew Lukin, Eliana Leish, Alexander Olgar, Sarah Elabelisi, and Matthew Graboli and Simon Barker. I do have a very large leadership group that unfortunately, some of them could not be here tonight because of homework. And, but I want to let everybody know that I am very honored and blessed to have an amazing amount of student leadership that I really cherish, and work might work best as a teacher and as a band director to develop student leaders for the future of this country. And I want to let you know that these students are fantastic, and I'm honored to be their teacher. Come on in, Mr. Weinberg.
Thank you so much. As a, as a proud parent of a Aliso Nigal band student, I, I'm, this is, this is a little special for me. So I just wanted to say thank you. On behalf of Mayor Genaway and the entire city council, this is a huge event. I mean, it, you keep doing it year after year, but that doesn't make it any less special. So on behalf of the entire city of Laguna Nigal and all these people here tonight, I wanted to present you with the special recognition that the City of Laguna Nigal recognizes the ANHS Marching Band Drum Line and Color Guard on winning first place at the Southern California School Band and Orchestra Association Division 3A marching band championships, and earning the highest score ever achieved in the 3A history, as well as winning back-to-back championships. Congratulations, outstanding. Professional photography, that's good. Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, and our next presentation is the announcement of the Word of the Month Art Contest winners for March 2018. The artwork is out in the umphire, and the word of the month for March was optimism. So we're a very optimistic community. Yes, we are. We're very optimistic. Okay, so we have two of the winners here tonight. The first one is in the primary group category. And this artist is incredible, because she just keeps taking it away. Brooke Rifkin. Is Brooke here? There you are. Congratulations, Brooke. You are such a wonderful artist. Your artwork is beautiful. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your talent with the city and showing everybody. You can stand back here. And in the classic group with candy is dandy, Cecilia Lance. So congratulations, and thank you for sharing your talent so all the residents can enjoy it. So you want to stand back here for a picture? And the winner in the adult category was Diane Nosse, who was not able to be here tonight, but we'll be sure to get her her certificate. Well, thank you very much. So March, the word of the month was optimism. For April, the word of the month is synergy. Because when we work together, the result is greater than when we work individually. Synergy for April, and we look forward to seeing all of your works of art. So thank you, ladies. Okay, and observance of time, the school safety Okay, and observance of time, the school safety presentation will be given at a future meeting, so this concludes our presentations for this evening, and we'll move on to public communications. There, okay. So this is the public communications portion of the agenda, and I understand that many of you are here to speak on a closed session item later this evening, but you're welcome to speak on it during this public communication session if you choose to do so, or you can wait and speak during public communications when we have our special meeting immediately following this. But we first have a few people who are here to speak on other items other than what the rest of you are here for. So let's let them go first. Okay, let's see. We have Tim Maron with Taste of Aliso.
Hello, my name is Edie Robertson, and this is my partner in crime, Tim Martin. And first, we want to thank you, Mayor and council members, for allowing us this time on what looks like a very busy night to just give a little public service announcement. We are here to represent the 11th Annual Taste of Aliso Nigal. Can you hear me now? Okay. I've got to bend down a little bit. We're here to invite everyone to the 11th Annual Taste of Aliso Nigal, which is going to be Saturday, April 28th. The Taste of Aliso Nigal is the largest fundraiser for Aliso Nigal High School and helps fund programs like BAND that you just saw. Everything from, uh, sports programs to facilities upgrades, helps with organizations, schools, organizations that desperately need funds yet are too small to come up with their own promotional events. This event features 30 tastes from local restaurants, as well as hundreds of silent auction items that the kids in these programs have put together. It's a very exciting event, and it's $30 a ticket. $25 of your ticket can go directly to the program that you would like to support. So you can get tickets, I'm going to give you the website address at ANHSPFAN.org. That's ANHSPFAN.org. In our 11th year, over the past 11 years, this one event has raised over $550,000 for Aliso Nigal High School. It is run by the PFAN organization, which is Parents for Aliso Nigal. We're just a bunch of parents who are concerned and wanted to make sure that our kids had the opportunities that they deserved, and 11 years later, we are still going strong. So we would love for you all to be a part of it. If you have a small business or any business and you're interested in sponsorship, we do that as well. So again, you can find out about that at ANHSPFAN.org. So we'd love to see you all there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Robertson and Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Again, we hope all of you in this room and the other room are here, or there, excuse me, there.
We picked the right day to make this announcement, that's for sure.
Yeah, this was the right time to come.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for coming to hear this announcement.
Okay. Next, we have George Ferguson. Please state your name and address for the record.
George Ferguson, 30912 Canterbury Place, Laguna Nigal, 92677. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak. The mayor did not mention the topic that I wanted to address, but it is the topic of congregate living facilities. For those of you that are not familiar with the term, sober living facilities, detox facilities, halfway houses, all of which are inundating Orange County. Zoning Code Amendment, ZCA 16-03, the City Code of Laguna Nigal Regarding Congregate Living Facilities, was supposed to be reevaluated on May the 9th, 2017, in order to limit and not allow non-licensed sober living facilities, or as you like to call them, congregate living facilities, in Laguna Nigal. On May the 9th, you were supposed to reevaluate this statute. On June the 20th, it was supposed to come to the floor of this meeting to be addressed. On August the 2nd, it expired. I spoke to one of the council members out front before this meeting started, and they told me it never came up. It just never came up. I umpired a Laguna Nigal Little League baseball game last night. The home team was ahead, then they changed the shortstop, then the other team became, got ahead, because of errors, unforced errors, unearned runs, not doing the mechanics. It's exactly what is happening with this particular issue. You didn't even bring it up when you said you would. I ask that you bring it up at the next meeting, pass the same thing you passed last time, make it for another year, and let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Ridge?
Honorable Mayor and council members, to the gentleman's information, the moratorium is still in effect until this August, and we are planning to bring back, hopefully by the end of April, a ordinance amendment that will address those very same issues, but there still currently is a moratorium in place on those types of facilities that we were able to do that. So hopefully that helps.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager Ridge. Okay, next, Jill Anderson. Jill Anderson regarding Airbnbs.
Hello there, I'm Jill Anderson, 23681, Bluefin Cove, Laguna Nigal. Sorry, I'm used to talking to five-year-olds, not all these grown-ups. Thank you. Okay. My husband and I have addressed the City Council for the last two years regarding the Airbnb issue in our city, and now we add the potential of homeless encampments, and we have even greater concerns for the quality of life in our city. We're here to address both issues, and I'd like to talk about the Airbnb issue myself. First of all, thank you for the time and energy you have put into hearing our concerns and addressing them. However, I have to tell you upfront that I'm extremely frustrated at this point with how it's all panned out. It seems that one landlord, who's a real estate attorney, has this council quaking in its boots and not looking out for the rules that you have enacted and for the good of the city. I've lived and worked and rented in Laguna Nigal for 20 years. As a teacher, it was a long time before I could even afford to buy a home here. However, at this point, we regret investing in our home as much as we have and wish that we'd spent money moving to a city that actually backs up the rules that it sets in place. Our standard of living, our standard of living and property values are both at risk as the rules for the rest of us are not being enforced. You went to the trouble and expense to research the Airbnb issue, run feasibility studies, consult other cities to look at legal precedent, and then decided to go ahead and strengthen the language in the city code forbidding short-term rentals that are booked for less than 30 days. We waited out the timelines for these owners to cease and desist their short-term rental businesses, and we're expecting to action to finally be taken. Now we're being told that nothing's being done since there's not enough police reports? Why are these rules not being enforced, police reports or not? We've provided evidence, photos of the multiple cars in and out of our property, dates of the Airbnb calendar, showing evidence of numerous renters less than 30 days. What was the point? My niece is a 911 operator. I will not call the police without having a real emergency. Foul language from a bachelorette party, I'm not calling the police for that. Parking in my parking spot, letting my pets out, I didn't report any of those things feeling they were not police-worthy matters. I've written a log of all those things and much, much more, but if I submit any of those incidents now, would that even help? I'm frustrated as I feel like I've done my part and can only sit back and watch while the Airbnbs expand, break the city code, and aren't being penalized in any way. What else am I, as a law-abiding, rule-following citizen, supposed to do? I've taken it upon myself to do a lot of legwork that protects all homeowners in this city, and it seems it was all for naught. We even managed to convince our homeowners association to amend their CC&Rs for our entire community. However, on the strength of this city engaging in this issue, our HOA stopped short of outlawing the Airbnbs altogether, assuming that your city rules would take, um, take over. Now, I've done my part. I am a educator, educating the city's youth. I have a full-time job and a family of my own, and I've done my part, and now it's time for you to do yours. Please enforce the city code you have already set in place. Otherwise, perhaps I'm going to need to subsidize my retirement one day by renting my home as an Airbnb to my built-in clientele of homeless people. That's your time.
If I could just a quick comment, can we please make sure that we contact her, because if she's having a concern, I want to make sure that code enforcement addresses this and addresses this immediately. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at that again then.
Yeah, we have your contact information.
We appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk Gomez, are there any other gold slips for any other items aside from the homelessness issue?
Uh, no, Mayor, just the ones that you have.
Thank you. Yes, you may come to the podium, and then please fill out the gold slip afterwards. Please state your name and address.
My name is Robert Neatman. My address is 23695 Bluefin Cove in Laguna Nigal, and I'm here to speak about City Ordinance That was the ordinance that was passed June 6th of last year to clarify and confirm the existing prohibition of short-term rentals in all residential zoning districts. Straight from the ordinance itself, the city is prohibiting short-term rentals for these reasons. Short-term rentals are associated with well-documented negative secondary impacts which have a detrimental effect on public health, safety, and welfare, including but not limited to additional traffic, excessive noise, disorderly conduct, overcrowding, vandalism, parking problems, accumulation of refuse, crime, and the overall degradation of a neighborhood's residential character and quality. Short-term rentals also remove housing stock that could otherwise be available for long-term rental or sale. So the City Council passed that ordinance, June 6th of last year, and also gave a grace period to those people who were operating Airbnb rentals to cease and desist by January 1st of this year. So we have a neighbor on our street that rents out his place as a short-term rental, and after January 1st, he continued to take new reservations and rent the place out. In the first six months of this year, we have 12 families passing in and out of that property. Some stay for two to three weeks, but the majority stay for four to seven days. I did contact the code enforcement office, I wrote a complaint, as did one of my neighbors, Jill Anderson, and the code enforcement officer did go out, interviewed the people that were staying there, and the people that were staying there actually lied about how long they were staying. They indicated they were staying all month, but it was actually 21 days. The code enforcement office sent a notice to the owner of the property telling him to cease and desist. That notice was sent out February 1st. There was supposed to be a second notice that went out March 1st. I contacted the code enforcement office to see if that went out, and I was stunned to hear that the city attorney told the code enforcement officer that there would be no further enforcement action.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay, so I want to know why there's no action, and the city has a duty to the citizens to see that people comply with the city ordinance as written, and that's why we have a code enforcement office. Failure to enforce code, laws, and ordinance just allows problems to expand and get worse.
Okay, thank you for coming to speak to us. Please be sure to fill out the gold slip so we can follow up with you. Okay? Thank you. Okay, next is Steve Thronson, the Orange County Red Cross Board Director.
Good evening, Steve Thronson, President of Laguna Nigal and Director of Orange County Red Cross Board, and I guess I picked the wrong night to present, but it is Red Cross Month, and really, you know, first of all, I want to thank you all for, for serving and your staff.
Excuse me, sir, could you please hold the microphone closer to you? You can pick it up.
Okay. And I just wanted to thank everyone for all the work you do in Laguna Nigal. I just recently moved back to Orange County and Laguna Nigal, and as a Board of Director for Orange County Red Cross, one of our initiatives, based on all the disasters in this last year, is the Board of Directors' outreach to all the city councils, just to let you know we're here and provide you a packet of information of all the good work we do, and just, just to give you an example, you know, in Orange County and the region, which includes San Bernardino and Riverside, we have, you know, more than 2,500 volunteers, 60 youth clubs, many corporate and individual donors, and we just want to make sure you're aware that we're available, and I'll provide my contact information as one of the board members and set up some time and another time to meet with some of you individually. Thank you.
Yes, we would look forward to that. Thank you very much for coming and addressing us. City Clerk Gomez, is that it?
That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we begin the rest of the public comments, I'd like to take the time to make a few comments on the homeless issue, and also like to provide my council colleagues with the opportunity to do the same. Our comments will be brief, but we feel it's very important for you to understand our concern with what has just happened. We are very, very disappointed and very outraged at the decision that was made yesterday at the Board of Supervisors. You know, we became a city for local control, and we know our city, and we know that the piece of property here, the courthouse property, which is right outside the front door of City Hall, is not an appropriate location for a homeless tent transitional site. This property borders City Hall, it borders the library, the library parking lot, where we have children and families using the library on a regular basis, and I'll also tell you, on a regional board, I also happen to serve as the Vice Chair of the Orange County Public Library Advisory Board, and the libraries around the county are having issues with homelessness, with the homeless population using the libraries that they've had to develop a protocol for their employees. Putting a homeless tent transitional housing site right outside the door of the library is not a good idea. Also, it borders on the backside residential area, which I'm sure many of you are here for, and also, right across the street, we have a childcare center, and we are within five minutes, walking distance, to an elementary school. Now, I, I share the concern. Now, I share the concern. My heart does break for the homeless in Orange County and how this problem has continued, and there has not been a resolution to it as far as the amount or type of help that's been given, but this is a problem that's been fermenting for years. And aside from years, when the motel vouchers were handed out, first distributed 30 days ago, there was a 30-day expiration date. So why are we all of a sudden in this time crunch to come up with a solution that named three sites throughout the county? And one of those sites that I can speak to personally, because it is in my city and that I am at the site very regularly, is just not an appropriate site, and I don't think homeless would receive the appropriate services. They would be far from public transportation. We know that bus routes have been cut. We also know, if you live in Laguna Nigal, it's not a pedestrian-friendly community. We have a few too many hills. It's not near an employment center, and it's not near county services. So how is anyone who is moved to this location going to be well-served? There does need to be... There does need to be a solution. We do need to take care of our homeless. We know that there are multiple reasons why a person is in this situation, and we do need to take care of them. But putting them on a site that is in the center of town is not going to serve the people who would be living there. It's not going to serve them well. So this is why I called for a special city council meeting. As Mayor, I can call for a special meeting with 24 hours' notice. The council, with three council members, can call for a special meeting with 24 hours' notice. So when we were first apprised of this, I did call for the meeting, and that special meeting will be held immediately after our regular meeting, because you know what? We still have the regular business of the city to take care of tonight. So when we get to the gold slips, you can speak either at this meeting or at the special meeting after. That will be your choice. But right now, I would like to give my council colleagues the opportunity to make brief comments, because I think when you hear what we're thinking, then that maybe may alleviate some of the concern that's in the room. And I would like to start with Councilmember Lindholm.
Thank you, and thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. This is irresponsible, this is unconscionable, and this is outrageous, and that's my feelings Just to let you know, we had no notification of this on Monday, late in the afternoon on Monday. Yesterday, we got notified that this would be the case, that the Board of Supervisors had voted on a 4-1 vote to include Laguna Nigal as part of their tent city. I have no intention of having this ever endanger our children or our residents. Don't move your problem out of Anaheim and put it here. You saw earlier the wonderful children of our community. I've only been back on the council for a couple months, but I have served before, four times, as your mayor. There is... I have always felt public safety is my number-one responsibility, and I will continue to have public safety as our number-one responsibility. I promise you that. This evening, we will be going into closed session, and we will be considering litigation. So I don't know. This is our home. My son went to the kinder care that's less than 500 feet away from here. Two-year-olds, three-year-olds, they're outside playing. They need to be kept safe. That's our kinder care. This is not a vacant lot. This is our home. This is where our children are. This is where our library students go, our elementary students, our middle-school students, our high-school students. They have to be kept safe. On another note, our homeless need... We have to be compassionate for our homeless, and we have to do our best for them. When I read that the County of Orange had tens of millions of dollars technically earmarked for mental health funding, and they did not spend it, with an availability of up to $186 million, I think that we find out where the problem lies. We have kept our city safe. I'm not going to speak more, because I want to hear you, and I think it's important that the supervisors hear you, that you continue to contact them, and you explain, this is not a vacant lot. This is a home. This is where two- and three-year-old children are. I remember those days, and I want to keep our city safe, as well as an elementary school that is, as you say, about five minutes away, walking time. That's all I want to say. I want to hear you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lindholm. Councilman Minigar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been extremely disturbed, appalled, and outraged by the decision of County of Orange to relocate 100 homeless individuals near our backyards. The proposed action will put the contemplated homeless population within five minutes of Molton Elementary School that my two kids went, and they got the best education. Molton Elementary has 660 kids, and this is not acceptable. As your elected representative, I have moral, ethical, and legal obligations to be a voice, not an echo, for you, the great residents of this beautiful paradise called Laguna I have... As my colleagues mentioned, I was surprised. I had no clues. I didn't know anything about it. When I started getting text messages, phone calls, emails from friends, constituents, neighbors, everyone in the city, hundreds of them, I was overwhelmed. I didn't know what to do. This is not the right protocol. The reason that in 1989 we were incorporated was only one thing: to be independent of the County of Orange, to be able to make the decision for ourselves. This is a very conservative city. We care about our community. We build our City Hall with cash, because we save money. This city is very special. There are 34 cities in Orange County. Our city is a jewel of Orange County. We want to sustain the beautiful quality of life that we've had here. My wife and I moved from New York City in 1989, only for one reason. We went to so many different states, so many different cities. The reason that we put... We selected South Orange County more specifically, Laguna Nigal, was we said we found the paradise in America. Over my dead body, I'm going to be seen. I'm a fighter. I, for one, I'm not going to allow any decisions that would jeopardize the beautiful quality of life that we all have experienced here. This is a very unique community, as the mayor mentioned. I'm cognizant, I'm compassionate to other people, to the homeless people. This is a federal issue. This is a state issue. This is a county issue. We pay the taxpayers of this beautiful city. We pay too much taxes. I want to see my tax money, your tax money, at work. They should use your tax money to build a facility out of here. By the way, I'm questioning that. 34 cities in Orange County, why City of Irvine? Why City of Huntington Beach? Why City of Laguna Nigal? I get it, service center, we have a vacant parcel. Let me talk about the vacant parcel. Last year, I served as the mayor. I work hard. I beg the county CEO, please give it one more chance for the Agura developer to come up with a mutual decision. I beg... The gentleman is sitting there. He knows my famous phone call, and I use the word... I never beg anyone for anything. I did for this one, for one reason. We wanted to have a downtown art center rather than having a tent city. It's not acceptable. As you're going to hear from my colleagues, we all think the same way. We have one job as councilwoman. Lori Davies... I'm sorry, Linda Lindholm mentioned, safety job number one. We have the best sheriff deputies in this town to keep us safe. A tent city is going to change the lifestyle, the quality of life in this city. This city is going to go down if we allow a tent city to be erected right behind the City Hall. I'm not going to allow it in any shape or form as I can, and I'm going to keep it short, to the point, to allow my colleagues to talk about it. Thank you very much for being here.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Minigar. Councilwoman Davies?
Thank you. Again, I want to thank all of you for coming as well. Typically, I'll just speak off the cuff, but I figured that I'd be doing a few FCC violations, because I'm truly anger. And so what I'm going to do is read it, so that I don't have any violations going. Thank you. One of the main reasons I ran for city council in 2012 was to maintain the quality of life that our past leaders had worked so hard to create. For over five years, the council, along with our local state leaders, have stood up and fought to protect our local control when it came to intrusive laws that would affect the safety and well-being of our residents. I never thought I would see the day when we would have to stand up against our Orange County Board of Supervisors, but today is the day. There are 100 reasons why the courthouse property is the worst location any elected official could have considered and voted on as an option to relocate the homeless. Not only have you had years to address this issue when it was still manageable, but now we find out you also had the funds. Shame on you for putting your head in the sand and doing what the state does best, passing the problem and the cost to our city. In the past, there was somewhat of a unified Board of Supervisors that looked at the County of Orange as one and didn't focus on their own district. Supervisor Spitzer, I thank you for being the only one to stand up against the decision, especially considering our own supervisor chose not to. I know it's election... I know it's election season, but I'm going to ask that all the supervisors stop pointing the fingers at each other and do what is right. Find another location that will not put our children, parents, seniors of Laguna Nigal, and its nearby city lives in danger. I promise the City of Laguna Nigal residents that we will use every legal resource to fight this reckless decision. I'm asking the citizens of Laguna Nigal to stand and fight with us, so we can preserve the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Protem Jennings?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I am going to speak without notes and risk the FCC violation. You know, I have to say, I've been around government for a while. This is probably the most ridiculous, boneheaded, poor decision I've ever seen out of a government. The fact that Laguna Nigal's name ever ended up on any list that in any way related to this is one of the worst things I could have ever thought of. It's just wrong. It's been wrong, and it was always wrong. The justification for that is, well, maybe they'll never get here. Maybe they'll fill up the other ones. Maybe they'll... I don't care. The fact that you mentioned Laguna Nigal obviously has effect on our community, obviously has effect on our children. Our schools have been having meetings today. Our businesses have been talking about what they're going to do with it. I received 8,000 contacts from residents today on this issue, and I didn't have a single one of them that was no. They were all, "Get rid of this, keep going, do your thing." Not single one of them. Forty years ago, the Laguna Nigal Corporation gave that property to the county for free, for free, to build a community center, to build a town center for this city. Well, hey, guess what? We did our part. We built a city around those 26 acres, and guess what? Still vacant. And now we have the audacity, because they didn't do their job, we have to face the problem here, that they want to take a tent city and put it on there. It's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. Maybe it's because I'm a lawyer, maybe it's because I'm a litigator, but I know how to handle this, and it's not going to happen. I share your outrage. I've heard the outrage of families. I've heard the outrage from people's kids, who sent me notes today. I've heard from longtime residents and new residents. I've heard from our neighbors in Dana Point and San Juan Capistrano and Aliso Viejo and Mission Viejo, all concerned that this little development that's planned over here is a magnet for all those people, because you put 100 there, you're going to end up with 200, aren't you? You give it 100 there, you're going to end up with some problems, aren't you? And I'm here to tell you, I'm glad to hear. You know, this is a Brown Act meeting, so therefore, this is really the first time I get to hear my council colleagues tell me their positions on that, but I think that we are unified. I can promise you that you have a very active, very strong city council that is standing up for you, and this is not going to happen. I am demanding that this be changed. We will appear in any venue we need to to support it, and I ask you to stay involved, because this means everything. We have thousands of people here tonight. They're out in the parking lot, they're in the community room, and all those people, we hear you. I hear you, and we'll keep doing our thing. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I think you all know how the city council feels now, and we are outraged. And those people who are not here tonight, your friends and neighbors, please share with them what was said tonight. There was also a statement released by the city earlier this morning that's on our city website that outlines all the reasons why this is not a good solution. So please share it with those people who are not able to be here tonight, and please assure them that their city council is looking out for them, that safety is number one in our city, that is a priority. Also, we are so concerned that this is not an appropriate site, and we will continue to work on that point. It is... Well, I think we've all talked a little too much, and it's about time we heard from you. So... Yeah, you can clap for that. Thank you. Okay, so we'd like to recognize we do have some electeds who are here this evening, so we will be calling on them first. We do have a couple of inches of gold slips of people who would like to speak. Some of you may, you know, want to speak, to be sure we heard you. We have heard you. We've received your emails, your text messages, your phone calls. I think you can see we're all on the same page. If you do not need to speak, if you feel your point has been made by either a council member or someone else, you may decline that opportunity to speak. In light of the fact that we do have a few inches, public communications will be two minutes each, and we will begin with... First one is Supervisor Lisa Bartlett. Okay, please be quiet. No, let... Do not disrespect our supervisor. Okay, can we please have quiet in the chamber, so we can hear? Okay, Supervisor Spitzer, would you like to go first? Okay.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much. It's a little bit of a break of protocol. I'm here because together, this community stopped an international airport at El Toro.
It sure did.
We knew that an airport would forever change the quality of life that we have fought for and fought for decades to protect. I am so thankful that you shared your sentiments before you took public comment, all five of you, because you have to understand what it felt like being the only elected official on the Board of Supervisors yesterday, saying this is what's most brain-dead proposition. I want to paint some perspectives that probably I have that maybe others don't, and it's the following. So the order of attribution for the homeless beds is 200 to Irvine, 100 to Huntington Beach, and 100 here. And the... And the theory is, you have nothing to worry about, because we'll never get to Laguna Nigal. Let me tell you why that's a false pretense. I just left the Irvine City Council. I represent the City of Irvine. And if you've ever met a litigious city, it's the City of Irvine. And I will assure you, even though they still had to go into closed session, that they will emerge unanimously in their lawsuit against the county. So that's gonna hold things up significantly. Number two, if that holds things up in Irvine, we next go to Huntington Beach. The Gothard location is a closed landfill. It has methane gas. There's migration issues. And if you ever try to grade a closed landfill, there's significant environmental issues. So that is gonna be potentially off the table very quickly and litigated. That means the entire burden of the homeless shift will be on the City of Laguna Nigal. And so I voted no, because, number one, it was completely disrespectful to have a conversation with a federal court judge, make a decision as each one of our representatives, without coming back to all of you and having an educated, informed discussion with law enforcement to understand what the potential impacts could be for all our community. That was disrespectful. Number two, I prosecuted sex offenders and a lot of bad people in my career as a prosecutor. I wrote the law that put the sex offender database on the internet through the Attorney General's websites, called Megan's Law, on the internet.
Excuse me, Supervisor?
Is it my time?
Yes, but the mayor
Please be quiet. We, you can have a few more, a little more, a little more. Go ahead.
I wanna, so in Anaheim, in my district, we have the first wraparound 24/7 shelter. It's called the Bridges at Kramer. It has an operating agreement so that no one can be driven. They can be driven up, but no one can walk up. No sex offenders. I made sure, my community, no sex offenders. These beds are the lowest of the lowest in terms of individuals who have indicated they, for the most part, don't want services. That means you're inviting the most, the lowest common denominator of the homeless community who don't want our help. They may just check in, okay? That means that you will not be able to control the kinds of people that are coming into our communities. And as a result of early release of prisoners, we have felons on our streets and people who used to be in prison and jail. You combine that with sex offender community, and you're gonna find this community completely destroyed. And like you, my dear friend, Councilmember Minaghar, over my dead body.
Thank you, Supervisor Spitzer.
Thank you, Mayor Jenaway and city council members. Good evening, and thank you, everyone, for attending. We've also had thousands and thousands of phone calls into my office, and I appreciate everybody weighing in. So we are trying to work through the trials and tribulations of working with federal Judge Carter. And we did have a special meeting on Monday. We had to be over at the judge's chambers. And Supervisor Spitzer, I am going to call you out on a couple things. And that's why Supervisor Nelson did at our board meeting the other day, because when I spoke about how unacceptable Laguna Nigal is for a site, for a homeless structure, you basically called me out and said, but Supervisor Bartlett, my district, the third district, has already done so much, and it's time for your district to step up and take these people. Meaning, move all the homeless people down to Laguna Nigal. So you can't be And that's why Supervisor Nelson did call you out on that, okay?
Okay, let the supervisor speak, please. We are all here, it is a public meeting. You will all have an opportunity to speak, but we need to hear each other.
And I'm going to be brief and to the point. And when people were asking, you know, why did you end up voting yes? When I had originally voted no. Well, we had to get something passed, and when Supervisor No, please listen, please, please listen. When Supervisor Nelson decided to abstain, we either had to get something passed, or we were gonna be mandated back into the judge's chambers. And if that were the case Please listen. If that were the case, the judge would have probably reordered and put Laguna Nigal in priority one instead of three, which was negotiated. So So that being said, that's what happened. I wanted to at least, if those three properties were listed in that order, I wanted to at least keep Laguna Nigal down on the third level. We do have Please listen. We do have an RFP that is out on the street for the city-centered downtown project. The deadline for the RFP is May 23rd. We want to fast-track that particular project and get something on-site here so that that completes your town center. And we will be working very closely with the city and all of the developers to make sure that that happens. So that, with that being said, with regard to the agenda item that was put forth and we got through, I have, along with another supervisor, put an agenda item forth for this Tuesday's board meeting. Judge Carter had mandated 400 individuals at the three locations. And the agenda item for Tuesday is to have the 400 put onto the El Toro Marine Base, because they can accommodate it. There's 100 acres there. It's flat, it's not near anything else. And that's where, the judge is gonna mandate that we have 400 go somewhere. And when you take a look at the 100 acres versus the other two sites, the Gothard site is totally unacceptable. It's a landfill. And the Laguna Nigal site is totally unacceptable. You have got a preschool across the street. You've got the school down the street, city hall, and you've also got the library here. And so the agenda item for Tuesday is to move the 400 onto the El Toro Marine Base site. And with that in mind, in addition to that, I have requested, I will be requesting to work with the City of Laguna Nigal, the council members and your staff, to consider filing a temporary restraining order. Now, I work for the county, but filing a temporary restraining order against Judge Carter and the county to prevent the homeless relocation to the City of Laguna Nigal. This property here is just not appropriate. And I think we have to take legal action.
That's her time. That's her time.
So that is what I am requesting tonight. And I know that you've got a closed session coming up, and I would love to speak at the closed session as well. But we have got to stop the homeless from coming down and getting relocated to Laguna Nigal. Okay?
If the audience could please keep it down so we can hear the speakers. This is still a city council meeting. Okay, Supervisor Bartlett? Do you have any final comments?
I will wrap up my comments at this point. So we have the agenda item on Tuesday, and we don't know hopefully that will pass, and the 400 will be allocated to the El Toro Marine Base. That is the best location out of the three. But the other two locations are just not acceptable. And this location is totally unacceptable with what we've got around it and for all the points that were stated before. So what we need to have is, we need to take some litigation into account and to perhaps file the temporary restraining order. We're prepared to go on our end, and I would love the city to join in with me in that temporary restraining order to make sure that we get an injunction, basically, and nothing comes down here. Thank you very much.
In our second meeting. Thank you, Supervisor Bartlett. Okay, next we have
Madam Mayor, may I make a comment?
Councilmember Lindholm.
I'd like to make a comment relevant to this, because she has mentioned that there was the Agora Project. Four years ago, I went to the County Board of Supervisors, supporting the Agora Project. Four years ago. That has not progressed through the County Board of Supervisors. So when they say they're putting an RFP out, they say that these things are gonna happen. It's already been four years. I, excuse me. Thank you, Supervisor Bartlett. I think it's time for the other people to speak. But I did want to let them know. Thank you.
Okay, we have Rhonda Riordan speaking on behalf of Senator Bates.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Isn't this a fun evening? Oh, can you hear me now? Yes. I'm delighted to meet all of them tonight. And there's a lot of agreement in the room. I am here on behalf of Senator Patricia Bates. You all know her. Is that correct? And so I'm gonna read a statement that she crafted today and gave it to me about five minutes before I walked in here. So she is very concerned. And this, I'm reading this in the I-person, so that you know it is written by her. "I strongly oppose the ill-advised decision of the Orange County Board of Supervisors to pave the way for homeless camp in downtown Laguna Nigal. It's highly inappropriate to base this camp that would border city hall and a public library and is across the street from a children's daycare center and five minutes from Molten Nigal Elementary. The designated location lacks public transportation and access to community healthcare services and is far from an employment center. This decision does not serve the best interests of Laguna Nigal's residents and the homeless. I call on the Board of Supervisors to reconsider its decision and take into account the concerns of those affected." Your founding Laguna Nigal mayor, your fighter and leader of the El Toro Airport, I added that, and current Senator and leader of the California State Senator Senator Patricia C. Bates.
And thank you, Rhonda. And please convey to Senator Bates how appreciative we are of her sending word. Okay, and now, from one of our neighboring cities, Mayor Dave Harrington.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Jenaway, Mayor Pro Tem Jennings, my brother Fred Minaghar, Lori, Linda, city manager Ridge. I rise before you today, I'm Dave Harrington, I'm the mayor of Elisa Viejo. I'm equally outraged with you about this decision. It is completely unacceptable. I'm not gonna repeat a lot of things that everybody else said. I'll tell you this, it is the primary responsibility of government to provide public safety. That's the primary responsibility. Everything else is gravy. Roads, bridges, and public safety, that's what we do. This is a direct result of failed leadership at the county level. Not the city level. We do on our job. They didn't do their job. Law enforcement wasn't enforcing the law on that riverbed. That's why it exploded the way it did, because they were allowed to be there. If we didn't allow them to be there in the first place, we wouldn't be dealing with this problem today. So now we're gonna pay even more money. We've already paid millions of dollars for this problem. It's ridiculous. So as the mayor of Elisa Viejo, I rise here before you today to offer our support to you in any way you see fit. We will be there for you. I can't say exactly what we will do for you, but I guarantee you, we are here to support you. We are more than just, we share more than just a border. We share a high school. We share a creek bed. That creek bed is, we are already having problems with homeless people in our creek bed. That is a county area. They refuse to patrol it or pay us. We have paid over $100,000 to patrol that area. And it's money well spent. It keeps them out of our city, and it keeps them off of our creek bed, which means that those trails that are behind the high school are safer, because we are spending the money. But that's a county area, and we do it gladly. So I want to finish, I want to finish my remarks with this. I hear a lot of people say, you know, I have my very heart, my heart goes out to homeless people. You know who my heart goes out to? Taxpayers. That's who my heart goes out to. It's not that I'm heartless. I just put my direction in a different area. We have paid handsomely to live here, and we deserve a little bit better than this. Thank you very much. I'm here for you. When you guys get done, contact us. You have my city manager's name. We'll do what we can for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Harrington. Okay, and from the City of Mission Viejo, Mayor Ed Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. I too come here to show support for the City of Laguna Nigal. I served with many of you on various boards. We know each other. And what is happening here can happen in any of the South County cities. About two, three weeks ago, I started a program with our mayors called Secure Orange County Schools. Your mayor stood with me in front of the substation in Lake Forest to launch this program. Supervisor Spitzer and I worked together on a project that he had at Canyon High School. The first thing you need when you want to secure your schools is to not put a homeless tent city next to them. It's gotta be rule number one in the book, you know? And it's not a big book. It's about three pages. That's rule number one. Rule number two is every school deserves, every school deserves an SRO in them. Every single school. And we need to find out how we're going to do that. Now, as it will also happen, your city and my city and 11 other cities contract with the sheriff's department for their services. We're currently running a consultancy to find out what those costs are and how we can trim those costs. But I will tell you that after the shootings we've had recently in schools and over the past two years, I'm not looking to cut police services in our schools. And each and every time the homeless get closer and closer to our children, all of our contract cities suffer. All of us have to pay the price for police services there. Now, I will say something that won't get a lot of positive attention in this room, but I'm used to that. The supervisors have a tough job. They have to think about what the judges are telling them to do. And it's difficult. But I do believe they should have come to you first before they mentioned any of the plans that they had. So again, I can't speak for my council, although I probably could. Because I know their heart, and their heart is with the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Sacks. Okay, are there any electeds who I did not call that I missed your gold slip?
Madam Mayor, I indulge. I need to clarify something. I think the audience needs to understand. If that's okay with your permission? There hasn't been
It's very, very short, though.
There has not been one court order. Everybody who says the judge is saying this and the judge is Judge David Carter married my wife and I 21 years ago. He's a dear friend of mine, but the fact of the matter is, friendships and personality have nothing to do with the safety of our communities. Yesterday, when I pushed back and there was a three-to-two vote, Supervisor Bartlett was a no. And she expressed her concerns for the community, which she's reiterated here. I do believe she seriously and fundamentally is committed to that. I don't doubt that at all. This is what happened. When I pointed out the impacts that this would occur in our communities, Supervisor Nelson went from a yes to an abstain. And he challenged me in that moment that if I felt the way I felt, we should immediately march back where we had come from an hour before to Judge David Carter's courtroom to argue why this was not good for our communities. And I said, absolutely, let's go see Judge Carter. That's when the vote flipped. And Supervisor Bartlett went to a yes from a no, and then Supervisor Nelson changed his from an abstain to a yes. The reason that is critical is because Judge Carter has overstepped his jurisdiction to order these tents in our community. The irony is, he's not made an order. And yet the supervisors are going down this path as if he has made an order. So for the record, and when you go into the back chambers for your legal counsel, understand, we have a very important federal issue. Is there a constitutional right to housing? When I went to law school, it's not in the United States Constitution.
Thank you, Supervisor Spitzer.
And so, just in closing, we should help everybody who wants to get help. But there's over 250 people who have said they don't want help. And now I've got to put them in tents in our community? No way.
Okay, so now we will as I've said many times, we have a lot of people who would like to speak tonight, and we are very glad that you're here. This is what participating in government is all about. Public communications will be two minutes each. Public communications will be two minutes each. If you feel your points have already been made and you do not need to speak, it is okay to pass. Just say pass. What I'm going to do is call four people at a time. Please line up in the center aisle so that when it's your turn to speak, you're ready to step to the microphone. And when you get to the microphone, please state your name. We do have your address on the gold slip and unless I ask for it, you just need to state your name in interest of time. So you have Cher Alpert, Randall Lipton, Robert Neatman, and Willem Ooms.
Good evening, Mayor Jenaway and council members. Your letter today on the website was amazing. I think I texted you and I said, you said it in your letter. I have been running around town passing that letter around with "come to the meeting tonight" to all the businesses around here. And it looks like through the emails of our residents and word of mouth, everybody is here and it's a delight to see. I'm dismayed by this. This is the second time in nine months that we've gotten a blow from the county. The first one was Agura. That was troubling. And now this. I voted for Supervisor Bartlett, but I'm not going to do it again. What I will do is put my name on a recall ballot to remove her. Because this is not right. She's going unopposed on this next election. I haven't seen the due diligence that we need from that office and not much of anything. And this takes the cake. We don't want, I have sympathy for the homeless, but there's a place for them and this is not one of them. Not across the street from a daycare center that my children went to as well and our library. So I say no and I support you in any legal action that you take. And I hope the rest of the community does too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bartlett. Okay, Randall Lipton?
Randall Lipton. Ironically, I had a meeting with Jackie Campbell last week talking about security at Moulton Elementary. I have an eight-year-old there in third grade. There were a number of things that we agreed needed to be addressed, short-term and long-term. None of that discussion considered the fact that there could be a homeless encampment within a few minutes of the school, certainly within a mile. I am not anti-the homeless. I understand the problem a little bit. I think homelessness is more a symptom of a myriad of other problems. Some of them are mental health. Some of them are people who have, for whatever reason, fallen on hard times. And basically, the rest of the population is an element that doesn't respect the law in one way or another. We need to do things to deal with this at the source. Taking the Santa Ana Riverbed issue and moving it anywhere is not a solution. We need to help the people that we can help and we need to enforce the law with the people that we can't. I'm, certainly you're going to do everything legally to prevent this. Maybe our next vocabulary word will be injunction.
You have 30 seconds?
But I, I think one of the things perhaps we need to do is to help the Orange County supervisors find their way. Somewhere, some plan should have been developed consulting law enforcement and other experts on how to effectively deal with these issues. And if the county can't put that together, maybe we should put that together for them and present it so that they have some reasonable options that actually makes sense for all the residents here, including the homeless.
That's your time.
That's my time. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lipton.
I'll make it brief, but I'm impressed with you guys, so we appreciate the fight. What I do not understand is the word supervisor, you're in a position of control? And I'm a CPA and how can you miss $180 million?
Okay, sir, what is your name? Sir?
My name is Willem Ooms. I've lived there 30 years.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Joni Allen Ooms, Jackie Campbell, Trina De Lamar, and Hi Finley.
Thank you so much for holding this special meeting this evening. I did sleep a wink last night. Willem was my husband who just spoke prior to me. We've owned three homes here in Laguna Niguel. Everything we do here is in Laguna Niguel. I have volunteered in every single grade of every single thing. My whole life is Laguna Niguel. When you go to Dana Point or San Clemente and you see what those communities have had to go through with their homeless population and people having sex on Pacific Coast Highway in the middle of the day, that is documented. The tweakers that are all through the Smart and Final down in Capo Beach, that is exactly what will happen here in Town Center. Exactly. We cannot be naive and just like you, councilmen, over my dead body.
Thank you.
I will be reading notes. I just want to let you know that I'm representing Moulton Elementary School and Capistral Unified School District.
And your name, please?
Jackie Campbell. I'm the principal at Moulton Elementary School. And first, thank you, City Council, for your proactive work to keep the city and our schools' family and staff safe. We so appreciate your partnership and collaboration on behalf of our students. I also want to thank the Sheriff's Department for their work in keeping our community safe and their partnership with our schools in our district. As a principal, I am deeply concerned about the safety of our school, our students, our families, and our staff, especially with such close proximity to the proposed emergency homeless encampment. While I realize there is a need to find shelter for these men and women, locating a shelter in the middle of a neighborhood community so close to schools is concerning on a very deep level to the families who have spoken to me, the many emails, text messages, and phone calls I've received, and to the district-level staff. Specifically, our PTA has been mobilizing and communicating directly with community members to contact the County Board of Supervisors directly. Again, thank you. Thank you so much for all that you do to make sure that our community is safe and our students are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Hello, my name is Trina De Lamar. And when I came here tonight, I did not think I'd be speaking. Didn't think I would have that much to say. But we've all heard the reasons why.
Excuse me, can you please speak into the microphone?
How about now?
Much better.
We've all heard the same reasons echoed through this chamber why the homeless encampment should not be here. But there's something else that I think needs to be addressed here. It's the fact that the state of California is a rich state. Our county has had money to deal with this problem for how many years now? And all of a sudden, 30 days has elapsed for the homeless. Now they've got to go somewhere. Let's figure out where they can go. We need a permanent solution, not one where we just keep transferring this problem to some other city, some other place, some other time. I am so saddened by Ms. Bartlett's statement tonight. I feel like she's just playing us for fools. If you knew what you said you did tonight, you're in agreement with everyone here, why didn't you just vote no?
Okay, Jack Tatum, Cheryl Burns, Linda Hutoff, and Jane Nelson. Was that Jane? Okay.
Cheryl Burns. It was very interesting, all of your statements and the elected officials here too. All of your statements were very interesting and I've heard them many times. And basically, you sat up there and said, there's nothing that you can do. So, my grandsons went through Moulton Elementary, Niguel Middle School, graduate, two graduated from Dana and one from Jay Sarah. I'm standing here because the, I didn't know, there's nothing I can do, and we have an honorary city council sitting here. That's what we have. We have a city manager, financial director, city attorney. Nobody knew anything until yesterday. Not a drop. The vouchers went out for the hotel rooms and nobody knew anything. It has been wonderful living in Laguna Niguel the many years that I've lived here. But over the past year, I've watched it go into the ground. That monstrosity that went up at Crown Valley and is still going up. And the Five Freeway? How in the world did that happen, people? How did that happen? And now you're shocked that the quote joke Board of Supervisors is pushing a homeless encampment on us? And now you're sitting there telling us now you're going to do something about it, but you didn't have a clue that it could possibly happen before? I'm sorry. I don't buy it. I'm with Mr. Holmes. That money was sitting there. You are representatives. You have these people who are supposed to be on top of that. They are not. Because if they were, one of you would have been making a motion to that joke board of city, of Board of Supervisors like Ms. Bartlett sitting here. What, what are you doing with that money to take care of the homeless? But nobody did. Nobody did. So now here we are. So I think that the City of Laguna Niguel wants that, because from what I understand, it's already being prepared for people to move in there. So what are you talking about? You're going to get a stay from a, you're going to go to court and stop it?
You have 30 seconds.
I don't need 30 seconds. I just need for everybody to understand, when you go to vote, you have been voting for these same people over and over and over. And here we are. Our law enforcement, our law enforcement is being beat into the, into the ground. They're being not able to enforce the laws. Sandra Hutchins is responsible for that mess, the homeless mess in Anaheim. I personally know that because I called the Anaheim Police Department December 24th, 2014, when I first discovered that encampment and asked what the heck was going on with the Anaheim PD. And they directed me to her. They said, that is Sandra Hutchins, the sheriff's project.
Thank you, Ms. Burns.
So you guys need to do your job.
Hello, my name is Jack Tatum. I'm not sure what I can add to that. I would like to say thank you to whoever ran that slideshow before the meetings start because that gave us a very graphic preview of what's coming our way. And I don't like it at all. I think it's a horrible idea. And the only thing else I would want to say is that I think, I don't really have to say anything. I think the number of people that are here tonight speaks for itself. And what I would do is just encourage everyone to stay involved in this issue and not, not let it drop. Let's follow it through and make sure that that homeless encampment never gets anywhere close to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum.
My name is Lyndi Utaff. My husband and I have only been in Laguna Niguel for not quite four years, so we are very, very new to the community. The thing that brought us down here-
Can you please bring the microphone closer to you?
The thing that brought us down here was our grandchildren. I'm not a young person. I waited a very long time to have those babies. And two of them go to school at kinder care. When I heard this afternoon what was going on, my blood ran cold. I don't think there is a person here that's had a child or a grandchild that wouldn't understand that exact feeling. It makes me feel good as a taxpaying citizen to stand here and know that I'm not alone. I think that we owe you all a debt of gratitude for looking at this with clear eyes and knowing that the most important thing is to protect those kids. And I live at the top of Pacific Island. When I first heard about this, I thought, I bet you anything, it's going to be down there by that fire station. And son of a gun, can't think of a worse place in the entire world to put that. But I'm not as concerned about me or property value or that kind of thing as I am about my Clark and my Eliza. So I thank you and I thank all of you. And I would encourage everyone, we do need to stay involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Cassandra Andreas, Debbie Hoffman, Michelle Plausel Campbell, and Craig Anderson. And I'm sorry if I'm butchering a couple of the names, I don't have my glasses tonight. Cassandra? Or are you passing? Oh, there she is. Here comes Cassandra.
I will be brief. Cassandra Andreas, thank you for having me. It's obvious there's a big disconnect between the communication and the respect between the county and our city leaders. I think we need to rectify this on both sides. It seems that you have been blindsided not just once, but now twice. Lisa Bartlett, I appreciate you being here. Thank you. I follow you on social media. You are in our city regularly with the city council members at chamber lunches, rotary lunches. I see you all the time. Why is it you could not respect our city leaders and communicate with them? This has to be rectified. We've got to find a way where there is more communication so that you are not blindsided and have this as a result. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie?
Hi, I'm Debbie Hoffman. I've been a resident here for over 25 years. Like many of the others, my kids went to the middle school, the elementary school, and my daughter was part of the first graduation class at Elise Oviedo, Elise Niguel High School. But I have to say, I don't think I've, I'm first time ever in council and first time I ever really considered selling my home. I'm absolutely a horn, and I'm sorry, this goes directly to you. I've called your office several times today. I have gathered people around because it is, after reading everything and even your comments today, I cannot believe that you didn't stand your ground and say no. And I wanted to tell you that part of this really centers around, I am a healthcare professional, I am a registered nurse, I have dedicated my life to public health. I am on assignment right now and I came back to handle this because I'm working with New York's city hospitals that have the same kind of issues, but they don't handle it this way. And what really gets me going and why I'm really upset over the whole thing, no due diligence. We think about these populations being homeless, criminals, and the impact it has on safety and the Sheriff's Department. What about public health? If anybody saw what the conditions, those slides today showed such a minute real impact over what happens in a tent city. Go to LA and see what happened when they had their tent cities and what they looked like, the crime, the rapes, the drugs, the, the, the disease, and we, and the human feces that exist in these tent cities. There's no rules. It's fair game. There's no fence. If you're in a shelter, at least there's rules. You can't just come and go. They open the doors, they provide meals. There is nothing in these tent sitters. It's like, it's like the Wild, Wild West. So I'm appalled that you represent me and you represent this community and there is no due diligence, no impact study in the environment. You just simply made a decision. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Hello, good evening. I'm Michelle Plausel Campbell, Mayor, City Council Laguna Niguel residents. As a Laguna Niguel resident of over 25 years, the decision by the county Board of Supervisors on March 19th was an extremely poor decision that simply moves the homeless from one location to a, to another, doing nothing to address the needs of the homeless. By voting to move them to tents in our city, the Board of Supervisors voted to move this vulnerable population away from the county's social services providers and mental health providers they so desperately need to overcome the true obstacles of homelessness. Our city houses no county social services or mental health services. Wherever this population is moved, services need to be close by. The Board of Supervisors' knee-jerk reaction and lack of forward planning and best practices of how to provide services to the homeless is appalling. I strongly encourage our city to take a strong stance of opposition. The homeless need help. This is not providing the help they need. Judge David Carter needs to tell the Board of Supervisors, "This plan does not meet the needs of the homeless" and require the county to provide continued hotel housing for this population while they establish a true service plan to meet the homeless needs. If, 40 years ago, that property was given to the county by the Laguna Niguel Corporation, it was part of a mitigation agreement. The city needs to go back to the county to force them to follow that initial agreement if they will not litigate that failure until they are all replaced in the coming elections. I want to encourage all our residents to make sure they are registered to vote because our supervisor, Lisa Bartlett, is up for reelection this coming November. Exercise your vote. Exercise your voice. Vote.
My name is Craig Anderson. I live in Laguna Niguel as well. Originally, I showed up here tonight to talk about the Airbnb issue, which my wife Jill did such a good job with. I don't know that I could expand on that. But that is a daily, a weekly battle that we will continue to fight. Because it's, you know, it used to be, I thought the Airbnb issue was enough to worry about. But now I have, now I have this new homeless thing to, to worry about. But as a citizen here, you know, I, I feel completely blindsided. And I know the city council does. I'm really, really grateful that you folks are taking such a proactive approach to this thing. We need that. And now more than ever. I, I can't speak for the rest of the people in the room, but there's no way I'm gonna let Supervisor Bartlett tell me she did me a favor by moving Laguna Niguel down on some list. It doesn't, doesn't make sense. And I think it, you know, when it comes to the, the Board of Supervisors, you know, the old adage probably applies. You know, a complete lack of financial acumen on their part no way constitutes some sudden bandaged solution here. They need to do, do the right thing and, you know, yeah, resign or, or walk off. But that won't happen. So let's give the homeless people what they need. They don't need a vacant lot in Laguna Niguel. They need, they need the right solutions. And hey, now that I'm retired, I officially volunteer my services to you guys. I'll, I'll make your copies. Or whatever you needed to do to, to fight this thing. So there you go.
And actually, I wrote volunteer on your gold slip. Okay, Dan Abrams, Dr. Jim Seitz, Luke Parison, and Ryan Burquist.
Hi, Dan Abrams, 29601 Ivy Glen, Laguna Niguel. Been a proud resident for 32 years. Really, I want to thank the city council for your countless hours you put in. And you're gonna have a heck of a lot more coming on this thing, thankless job. But Dan, it's just like amazing today. I remember this like 30 years ago, sitting there, fighting for cityhood next to Pat Bates. We were going for cityhood and then we got blindsided by the supervisors at that time. We lost the coast and went to Dana Point. And then turn, turn around again, the Agora Project, we got blindsided again. The supervisors put a hold on it. And man, we, we had, the plans were going ahead. Now, what amazes me about this, this whole project, and I was getting to think about it, is that Supervisor Bartlett, when, when you were saying that you had to make a decision and Laguna Niguel got hung out to dry so you could make a decision for the judge, why didn't you do Dana Point where you were past mayor? You know, the coast. There's a beautiful hotel, right perfect for them. The county owns with a huge parking lot. And if you were true to your word, you'd use Dana Point, not Laguna Niguel. When we moved here, we were proud because I was told and then felt it, Laguna Niguel's the Beverly Hills of, of California. And it is. But just having that tag, name on here, Laguna Niguel Homeless Shelter. So Supervisor Bartlett, I appeal to you, change your vote around and help the other supervisors, you know, vote in favor of us. Turn your vote around. You can do it. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Luke Parison. I'm a Laguna Niguel resident, nine years. I'm also a local firefighter and paramedic. And I have a, have a visceral experience. Thank you. My experience with these homeless camps, demands that I speak here this evening, the things that are being said, they're not exaggerations. I've seen rapes, beatings, I've seen drug addicts. And to any of you politicians that walk through these places and take tours in the middle of the day with security and sheriffs, I, I advise you to go there at 2 o'clock in the morning with no sheriffs. Or maybe you'll have a sheriff with you. But you're not being escorted through. There's this human waste and there's fights and there's needles. And we're working on these people. We're attempting to save them. We're rendering medical care. So I do care for these people. I am sympathetic to their plight. And we do need to help them. But this is clearly not the right, the, not the right place to do it. So I'd like to tell the, the sheriffs that if they plan on doing this, that you're gonna have to hire more people that day because you're gonna have to arrest me and you're gonna have to arrest all these people because we're gonna be there. And every single tent that goes up is coming right back down. And you can take me to jail. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Jim Seitz and I had written myself all kinds of notes. But I really very much appreciate what I have heard tonight. You don't know anything about my background, but it's simple. I came here as a principal from another area in the Capistrano Unified School District. I was a principal of the high school, a principal at an intermediate school, and a principal at an elementary school, and I loved it all. I moved to Laguna Niguel in 1985. So I know all about the cityhood and all of the other things. But I think we're looking at deja vu. And I was reminded by Dan, one of the things that he said, the cityhood fight. Then this debacle with Agora really upset me because we finally were beginning to see the fruition of our dreams only to be told that nobody knew what was going on. And by the way, the Board of Supervisors took action and you're out of luck. And then to have something like this and all of the things that you have all said, they have all said, ring true to me because I, I personally have fought the battle for affordable housing and other things when I was in Dana Point. As Ms. Bartlett can tell you, even before she was in public office, I was speaking in front of the Dana Point City Council and had an ongoing battle with a couple of people that were billionaires over land use and evicting people who could least afford to be evicted from certain properties to put in developments.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
Ah, thank you. Well, I really appreciate everything I heard. I'm fully aware, let's mobilize. That slideshow, it needs to go out to every resident of Laguna Niguel. And having participated and recalling Board members and everything at one time or another, I would certainly hope, I think your vote count and participation will be well in excess of 90% in favor of what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Burquist, first time listener, or a longtime listener, first time caller?
Welcome.
So I came up with grandiose ideas, like I was gonna pound my fist on the podium and talk like Benito Mussolini and yell and scream and be all angry like everybody else in here. But everybody's already angry and mad about all this, so I've got nothing left. So I'm gonna share two stories. One, I grew up a parent or a son of police officers. My father retired 36 years out of Tustin PD. My mom, 32 years out of the Orange County Sheriff's Department, prior to that, the Orange County Marshals Department. And way back when, in the 90s, before the marshals merged with the sheriff's department, the marshals were in charge of the courts. And as we know, there's a gigantic homeless encampment in front of the court in Santa Ana. And I remember growing up when I would be picked up from school and dropped off and my mom couldn't get off of work. I would think, "What a fantastic building, but why does it smell like urine and feces?" So not all homeless are violent. But certainly if you have to have certain bodily functions, it has to go somewhere. So do we really want our city smelling like that? Do we really want our town hall smelling like that when we walk up to city council meetings like this? No, we want the fountains, not the feces. Second point, and it's really quick. Today, just today, I took a test to become Laguna Niguel's newest registered veterinary technician. And I can tell you, if one tent goes up in the city, I will be Mission Viejo's newest registered veterinary technician. Thank you, council.
Okay, Cindy Johnson, Michael Hutaff, Julie Zimera, and Mark Brown.
Good evening, Cindy Johnson. I'm representing the Monarch Homeowners Association and my neighbors, friends, and everyone here. Thank you for your encouragement and your action to move against this. I am concerned that we have had past situations with the county that the council has been blindsided. Wondering if there isn't an opportunity for someone from the city, whether it's a council member, a staff member, to attend these supervisor meetings so that someone on the inside has a heads up before things like this happen. Thank you.
My name is Mike Utaff. You guys heard a few minutes ago from my mom, who actually moved down here to be closer to my children. And I think for me, last night, I couldn't sleep. I actually sent my first email to the council here after midnight because I just, I, it was bothering so, me so much hearing about this on the radio yesterday. And today's actually the first day I've ever council called my supervisor's office. I never thought I had the need to before. But I do have two small children. I have a two-year-old daughter and I have a five-and-a-half-year-old son who go to kinder care right across the street from the site. And I value nothing more than their safety and their lives. And when I think about and I see the pictures of the encampments and I drive by it, well, it's gone now, but I used to drive by it every day going to work, going up the 5 freeway. And I kept thinking to myself, "This is, this is awful. I can't imagine that something like this even exists here in Orange County." And, and the thought that it could even be this close, not until where my children go to school, but I live up Ivy Glen. My wife and I and our children, we go to Starbucks on the weekends. And to think that I'd have to be walking through these types of conditions on a regular basis is awful. And I second the gentleman who was talking about stopping anything from happening here. And I'll tell you what, nothing will stop me from protecting my children. And I, I will stand with you, sir. I will tear down any tent that comes to this city and I will fight for us here. Thank you.
Wade Miller, Louis Langella, Savan, and Melissa DeScala.
Good evening. I'll keep my comments brief. To think a few months ago, my biggest beef with the occasional smell on Niguel and Crown Valley, which I understand is Multon's issue. We're gonna have a bigger smell on our hands here if we can't deal with this. Somebody made the comment that if you don't watch your PZQs, your infrastructure becomes optimum and conditions become optimum for something like this. So maybe there's a few positive takeaways from this. I think I represent the 40-somethings in this community. Moved here 13 years ago. I've coached Laguna Niguel girls softball for two years. My son's baseball team for two years. And I see a lot of adventure guide, Indian guide dads here who pride ourselves in raising young men here. We call it 100 Dads for 100 Kids. So kids are our passion. I'm a single father of two. And I moved here 13 years ago, but I started visiting in 89, 90, right after annexation when my sister moved here, fell in love with this city. Beautiful paradise. More parks per capita, I think, than anywhere in the US. 19 states of city in the US. But to come here is a price, right? To live in paradise, we pay for that. And we pay in taxes. So just like the gentleman too, as I drive around and I would see those encampments, my heart goes out for them. They need services. They don't need a can, to have the, kick the can down the road and disperse them like a third-world country would when Olympics was coming in town and make it somebody else's problem. That's what they're trying to do here. They're trying to deflect and make it somebody else's problem. We won't stand for it.
You have 20 seconds.
I moved here from a small town in Arizona. I have the unique perspective of seeing this. Parks that I used to be able to go to as a kid are now littered with hyperbaric needles. Could be HIV-positive. Homeless sleep on the parks, meaning them, they're rentless for use. These beautiful parks are now homeless camps. To think they will stay in this area is asinine. They're gonna disperse. And like Elise Viejo and Mission Viejo, these are imaginary lines. They go into everybody's community. So I commend you, the optimum word of optimist. I'm very optimist coming, I'm very, I was pessimist coming in here, now I'm feeling very optimistic. Shame on you, Ms. Bartlett.
That's your time.
Okay, sir, what is your name?
Wade Miller, 27841, Milt Circle, San Joaquin Hills, Laguna Niguel.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. I'm Dr. Melissa DeScala and I'm a Laguna Niguel resident. Thank you for all you do, first of all, in service of our city. I agree with many of the concerns listed already, but my biggest question to the county is, "How is the county of Orange going to provide access to resources for the safety, security, and well-being of those that are moving here temporarily?" As has been stated before, those who will be relocated need to have access to medical, health services for the medical, dental, mental health, psychiatric, and healthcare needs. It is unhelpful and irresponsible to move those who rely on these vital services so far away from OC locations where these services are readily available. I urge the county of Orange to partner with experts at the universities for free. They offer their services for free. And nonprofit agencies who know these issues, the challenges, and the treatments for those who are experiencing homelessness. I would request that the, that we not further traumatize and demoralize the homeless community by putting them in a tent city far away from vital resources. This is 2018. This is Orange County. We have the money. We can and we must expect our community officials to do better. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you for the time to speak. My name is Louis Langella, 24216, Juanita Drive, Laguna Niguel, California. I speak to you with, with a Marine of 23 years' experience. Entered 1995 as an infantryman, done nothing but infantry from enlisted to officer. I was given the opportunity to serve overseas and in so doing, I never thought that an infantryman would have to build a tent city. And I did, to, to house foreigners, to house Marines. And there's a lot that goes into that. Graywater waste, all the things that need to run a small city because it's not just a tent. It's going to be a small city. It is demoralizing to send those homeless people there. And it's even rougher to have that area policed. And these are the things that I've learned. It, it's not good for anyone in the community. There's no identification of a Camp Commandant to go through there and sweep it out and make sure things are running the way they run. Make sure those individuals are going to the place that they're supposed to go to. No one to really set a curfew for them. So I understand that my daughter is watching this live stream. So Haley, you wanted to know how to get into government. Ms. Bartlett is running unopposed. I am more than willing to step up and run. I am more than willing to step up and run, not to demoralize and say she cannot do, but her time- her time has passed and I am more than willing to help out in any way, shape, or form that I can. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members, and other elected officials. My name is Savan Zulikian and I'm from the same community as Major Langella. And I wanna, and I wanna come from a perspective that the word homelessness, there's an assumption that the individual wants help. They're out on their bad luck, they need help, they need services. We have those services. We have ways of getting those services. But there are people who live amongst the homeless community that don't want the services. They don't want to live in communities that are shelters that have rules, lights out at nine, lights out at ten. These individuals will find their way down here in Laguna Niguel. They will spend one night, they will spend two nights, and by the third night, they're out on the streets. And then, there are gonna be more. The one-hundred that the county is promising, I guarantee you will be two-hundred. So as far as the litigation goes, I'd like the board to think outside the box. There's a ton of codes out there, the environmental code, the health and safety code. The board must consider all of these issues. Because you never know, there may be a judge out there who will agree. You're right, it is gonna be an environmental hazard, because what we learned at the Anaheim is that they left nothing but feces, used needles, and in San Diego, they're spraying for hepatitis B. So, I ask the board to consider, again, on a legal basis, all issues. Next, I ask the board to contact our colleagues in Irvine and Huntington Beach. This must be a concerted effort. What we do not want is a city of Irvine and Huntington Beach pointing their fingers, because my fear is Laguna Niguel is the smallest city and we're gonna get left holding the bag. So it must be a concerted effort. And I appreciate the fact that there are members from Mission Viejo and Dana Point, because this will be a general community problem. This will not be a Laguna Niguel problem.
That's your time.
May I make one more statement?
One more.
Thank you. I think the word for next month should be recall, because that's exactly what's gonna happen to Supervisor Bartlet and to any member of this council that does not follow through with their promises. Thank you.
Okay, Christian Reeves, Steve Wilson, Anthony Abraham, and Pam Stone. Christian Reeves, Steve Wilson, Anthony Abraham, and Pam Stone. Please just come up to the microphone and tell us your name.
Hello, my name is Steve Wilson. Thank you for hearing this. Pretty much everybody's opposed to this. I haven't heard anyone for it. I've lived here for twenty-one years. This is a very real issue to me. I walked to this meeting. I live one block away. I can see this from my house. I'm the neighborhood watch block captain, safety. I don't know what, maybe I'll have to be an armed guard now. Some of the issues this poses, we've stated sanitation, parking, rats, disease, trash. What limits the number of people? People have stated this. You say one-hundred? I don't know. How do you say, you can't limit it? And how do you end this, once it started? What kind of time limit is there? Transportation, like you said, there's very few buses that support this area. So people have stated all these problems. What they have not done is suggest solutions. What can you do to help us? What you need to do is, tonight, in your private session, enact city ordinances against this. Limit public camping, limit group sizes, gatherings, to two weeks, thirty days. Do things that are going to cause this to be a problem for the county to allow this to happen.
You have twenty seconds.
Require permits. They may own the land, but make it difficult and unpalatable for the county to move ahead with this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Tony Abraham, and I guarantee you'll hear me, okay? Four to five years ago, Jerry McCluskey, a friend of mine, used to be mayor, he told me that we needed to do something about that land. And he said, if we don't do something, the county will do something. That was four to five years ago, okay? Now we're sitting here, now they're doing something, and it's bad. Now, the reasons against it, obviously, I'll just list them quickly. Crime, more drugs, more drugs. Problems for law enforcement, which they got enough problems right now. Problems for the preschoolers, problems for the homeowners, obviously, we're all homeowners. Problems for the businesses, the local businesses, theft, accidents, and garbage and sewage. Okay, the accidents, just a quick one. I was in Tempe last week, visiting my granddaughter. She's at Texas A&amp;M, I'm sorry, she's at Arizona State. And the homeless are running wild there. It's a brand-new, it looks like a brand-new city, beautiful buildings, et cetera. The kid, I was driving down Mill, just like the people in the autonomous cars yesterday. I was driving down Mill and they were crossing the street anywhere they wanted and on bicycles with no lights, anything, middle of the night. I said, this is dangerous. This is unbelievable. Okay? One autonomous car, the highest technical vehicles that we have, hit one yesterday on exactly the same street in exactly the same spot. Okay? And it was a homeless person. I don't know if you know that yet. It's a homeless person. And that's what we're going to have here. Can you see on Crown Valley exactly what I'm talking about? So don't consider litigation, do it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, we are very happy that so many of our residents have come out tonight to speak on this issue. If you feel that your points have been made by someone else and do not care to speak, that's fine. You don't need to come up to the microphone when I call your name. It is nine-ten and we are not halfway through the gold slips. So I will keep calling four at a time, but if you want to pass, you just don't need to come up and we'll know when you do not step up to the microphone. But thank you all for being here. Next, we have Eric Pearson, Sharon Lane, Wortoza Hajan, and Kent Henderson. And you don't need to go in that order, because some people may be coming over from the overflow room.
My name is Sharon Lane, and I chose to retire in the city of Laguna Niguel, because it's beautiful, clean, and safe. Now, the problem that I see with this is everything you stated, I agree with everything you said. I love the letter that you wrote, Mayor. Thank you very much. But there's one issue that I think people have missed. On the top of Niguel Hill where I live, there's a very large number of homes for seniors, fifty-five plus. Across the street, right over here in Crown Valley, they've built these huge apartment condo-type things for seniors. And what seniors do when we're retired is we go someplace. And where I've been going is to the library, which I won't be able to do anymore. All the shops over by the Albertsons across the street, close to the daycare center, all those services, the restaurants, won't be able to go there anymore. The Bydenalts and all the restaurants along there and all the other little shops won't be able to go there. Across the street, won't be going to Smart &amp; Final anymore. I'll have to go to another city, because I have lived where there are homeless people. And I'll tell you what happens when you are a female and my size, especially if you have gray hair, you are accosted by these people who think you're a pushover. A lady was sitting next to me and she said something and I said something and she said, gee, you look like a pushover. I thought, that's exactly my problem. I'm tired of being accosted by men who want something from me, and I mean money. Give me money, lady. I don't have any money. Well, you're going into a restaurant? When you come back out, bring me some food or else. You know, that's the kind of garbage that happens. And I don't want to live in that. That's why I don't live over by Santa Monica anymore. I live here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Pearson and I've been a Laguna Niguel resident for sixteen years. More importantly, I'm a father of three boys. We've talked about the preschool that's right across the street. I don't have a street between myself and this lot. I have only one other house that's closer than mine. On my street, we have children that live on the street. I have a house of a four-year-old, a six-year-old, and an eight-year-old. My back patio is their playground. They have chalk that they draw on it. They have their little three-wheelers that they ride. The street, right here, is the same street that they learned how to throw a football with me. It's the same street that they're learning how to ride a bike. There is nothing between them and this encampment. We had a firefighter talk to us earlier and he said, try going to these camps at two in the morning. How about living right next to that, with only a quarter inch of glass between your family and this? Now, we pay a premium to live where we live, and we love it. That's why we all do it. Many of us commute a long distance. I worked a fourteen-hour workday yesterday. I got home at ten o'clock. I learned how to do a tweet. And I tweeted you. I only got two likes. One was mine. But this is important to me. I'm not political. I don't come to these events. It's not my thing. But my thing is my community. And this is where my children live. This is where, this is all they know. I lived here in my twenties, I moved here. I grew up in Irvine. So my heart goes out to Irvine.
You have ten seconds.
I just think this is great ammunition for anyone that wants to run. The campaign slogan is, "Not Lisa Bartlet." That's it.
Okay, Justin Bose, Kristy Bryan, Stephanie Odo, Sharon Cowart.
Good evening. My name is Kristy Bryan. I've been a Laguna Niguel resident for almost fifteen years, and I'm a mother to four girls. My emotions are high for many reasons. First, you hear there is money allocated that hasn't been used to help the homeless. The Board of Supervisors are not doing their job. They either knew about the money and decided not to help, or they claim they didn't know about the money, which makes them incompetent. Both cases are an outrage. My oldest daughter runs cross-country for Dana Hills High School. They run regularly in the regional park and on the trails in Wood Canyon. My husband works in Santa Ana and has seen firsthand the problem by the courthouse in the riverbed. The things he saw are unbelievable. You better believe there's no way I will let my daughter run in this community. My husband also noticed six to ten police officers this morning monitoring the courthouse. Do we have the resources to provide that protection? No, we do not. This was not thought out. We are smarter than this, and if our officials cannot figure it out, let's elect someone who can.
I am Sharon Cowart. I am a special education teacher in Anaheim Elementary School District. And what I want to share tonight is a little bit different, is that I actually had two families of homeless people living with me in Laguna Niguel. And one family was for ten months, and it was a mom and her two children, and her husband, which is my brother, was in, serving a sentence in jail. And the second family was a homeless family of three adult women from Lake Havasu City. And what I want to share is that it was not successful here in Laguna Niguel. And they had my residency, they had food on the table, they had love, they had support, they had rides for me to get where they needed to go. And it was, it was just battle after battle, living in Laguna Niguel. There was no services, there was no resources for them. My sister-in-law that tried to have, that was working in Irvine and had to have daycare for her two children at the George Wyatt School, it was five-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month for one child for daycare after school. And the low income was two-hundred-and-fifty. In Anaheim, where I work, for low-income children for after-school care through the YMCA, it's a dollar a day. And for low-income, if they can't afford that, it's free. And there's no waiting list. They make accommodations for everybody. And with the women of, that came from Lake Havasu City, they were trying to get social security cards, they were trying to get driver's license, they needed food stamps. I don't, every time they had to go somewhere, they had me. They had me to drive them to Santa Ana to do the things that they need to do. Two of the girls work at McDonald's right here on Golden Lantern. And the money was so little, there's no way they could even afford housing, let alone a bus pass. Where are they gonna live? So what I want to say too, is that when I came here, I left my purse in at a table and I was trying to figure out where to bring my gold slip in, and I saw my beautiful friends that just spoke here from church, Eric Pearson and Kristy Bryan. And I said, you know, I left my purse in there and did you know it wasn't even a big deal? Because I feel safe. When I go, I parked over at Smart &amp; Final, and when I go and walk over there right now, you know what? I feel safe, because I live in the city of Laguna Niguel, and that's the way that it really needs to stay.
My name is Robert Harvey. I'm speaking for Justin Bose, who had to leave, if that's okay with the council?
And your address, please?
Nine Cordado Point. I volunteered two days a week at the Orange County Rescue Mission, so the plight of the homeless is not something that I'm not unfamiliar with. I have great empathy for their problem. The issues of safety, though, that have been mentioned by the number of speakers here tonight, I agree with wholeheartedly, but there's one issue of safety that I don't think has been mentioned yet. The proposed encampment would be two thousand feet from wilderness area that is highly susceptible to fires. Now, we saw what happened in Beverly Hills with a homeless encampment and what was caused there. And I would caution the council, the supervisors, to take that into consideration as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dan Del Rosario, Lawrence Mumford, Melissa Caldwell, and Bruce Razner.
Dear City Councilmen and ladies, I'm gonna give you a little different take. I've moved here in nineteen-seventy-nine. Two years later, I became involved in the Laguna Niguel Community Council, which preceded the city.
Bruce, can you put the microphone a little closer?
You bet. And after the county continued to dump and dump and strong-arm this community, even though we had the rights to pass on all development in Laguna Niguel, or at least make recommendations, enough was enough. We finally ended up suing the County of Orange. I will tell you now that not only did we sue the county and one of the developers that had proposed a five-story high-rise on Crown Valley, notwithstanding the fact that it was a designated scenic corridor. I met your city attorney then, because his firm undertook that lawsuit. I practice well myself, I have for forty years. I went before the Board of Supervisors on a number of occasions, imploring them to stop it, and particularly to give us a shot at keeping the coast of Laguna Niguel. Nineteen-ninety-six, the congressional record did state that Laguna Niguel was characterized and had the boundaries between what is now Monarch Beach up to the freeway. But they wouldn't listen. And they jury-rigged an election and we lost it. And then it was going to them to try to get the best deal we could, and when it was all over, this city was approximately eighty percent built out. I will tell you this, I don't know how many people and members of the Board of Supervisors are smart, but they make up for it, if they're not, with their arrogance. We have much too much arrogance all across this country at this time. We've had enough. So the one thing I'll tell you, which was not my expression, I'm sure you all remember it, trust but verify. This council has to go forward with whatever litigation that... This council has to go forward with whatever litigation it takes. If there's a possibility of joining the Board of Supervisors, in such litigation, you make that determination. But you have to take this as far as it goes because we don't have to sacrifice this community one more time.
Chris Anderson, Michael Correll, Rick Regal, Amanda Azato.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Michael Correll, 24906 Oxford Drive in Laguna Niguel. I just wanted to say, I had prepared statements, but after tonight and hearing all the speakers, all I have to say is yesterday was a sad day for this city, for everyone that chose to live here. I too did not sleep last night. My neighbors were disrupted while I was walking my dog because I was on the phone with one of my cousins telling them what was happening. And I would probably be preempted by the powers that be with the language I was using and my neighbors were probably not happy with it. But I was furious. But today is a good day. And I say this because I know what outrages you, our city council. And I finally know what it takes to get you fired up. I want to go up and hug every one of you and thank you. And I want that fire to stay lit until we fight this to the end. Our supervisors have failed us. Failed us. And it is unconscionable that they think that this is what this city needs. And what these poor homeless people need is not to be here away from the help that will possibly get them to a responsible and happy life. But it's not gonna be here, living in a parking lot in a tent. I love going to Pizza Lounge. I love going to Lagato Cafe. I will not go to Albertson's. I will not go to CVS. I won't go anywhere around here. I love Denault's. My God, they have everything.
You have 10 seconds.
But I won't go there if this happens. And I will sell my house and I will leave this city. Guaranteed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry, I'm a little nervous. My name's Amanda Azato. My address is 28621 Merlet Drive. Sorry, I have some notes on my phone. I'm a mom, wife, and business owner, just trying to raise my five- and six-year-old children in a state that's making that job harder and harder. I feel that this may be the last straw for my husband and I. We work day in and day out to make the money we need in order to live into South County, which we thought would insulate our little family from many of the issues that affect much of Orange County. Lisa Bartlett should be ashamed of what she has done to the families of Laguna Niguel. Also, please just remember that this is not just a local leader issue that needs to be voted out. This goes straight to Sacramento. This encampment issue has awakened people that are typically apolitical. We are a force to be reckoned with. We will see this to the end and we will not give up. We need good candidates for the Board of Supervisors, candidate, and we need to get out the vote. And if the Board of Supervisors brings this to our backyards, we will bring picket signs to their front yards. Thank you.
I have a statement on behalf of Melissa Caldwell, who had to leave because she is a single mom.
Okay, did I already call her?
Yes, you just called Melissa Caldwell's name. She was last one of that group. And she had a couple of questions in a statement. She wonders, "Why did Bartlett go back and change her vote to no when given a chance by Spitzer to go back to Judge Carter? Why did she want to appear weak and change to say yes, especially when no order has been put in place by Carter?" And she also wants us to be aware that there are over 25 Niguel Hills Middle School students who stand on the corner of Pacific Island and Highland every morning by themselves, waiting to get on a bus. That is unacceptable. It is a safety issue for our children. So can you please make sure that is included? Because our children are important and need to be safe. And it needs to be considered by our supervisors. Thank you.
Chris Anderson or Rick Regal? Okay. Kevin Roush, Ray McPeak, Robert Helgreen, Helgason, and Jan Henry.
Good evening, everyone. City Council, Mayor, thank you so much for hosting us this evening. Members of the county, members of the city, thank you so much for staying so late. My name is Kevin Roush. I'm a business owner, husband, and a father of two in Laguna Niguel. My business is Roush Physical Therapy, literally located 257 yards that way directly behind you. We just recently moved into Laguna Niguel Town Center. I'm excited about my new practice. We've been here for 12 years already. But I can tell you, I'm scared to death of what is potentially coming our way. My children go to Molton Elementary School. I fear for their safety. I fear for the health and the safety of my business, its clients, the patients that we treat on a regular basis. And I'm severely disappointed that we've gotten to this place where the potential harm from this decision is going to come and affect all of us here in Laguna Niguel. Love the city, love this people. Been here to serve them and help them for a long, long time. And I want to continue to do so. Board and City Council, I want to thank you all very much for your opinions and for your statements this evening. It's been fabulous to hear your ideas and your opinions. I did leave a Little League baseball game in the fifth inning to make your meeting. We lost. But go Cubs. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jan Henry. First, I just want to thank Mayor Genoa and Pro-Tim Mayor Jennings for your public comments today and for the entire City Council coming out and putting out the information on the website. I wanted to let you know, I don't know if you're aware of this, but there are more than 400 people currently watching the meeting live on Facebook. I would say probably over 600 people in attendance tonight. And there's currently more than 1,500 members of a brand-new Facebook page for the Laguna Niguel Tent City in less than 24 hours. And I think that says a lot about our community. My husband and I moved here three and a half years ago and have been very involved. And I've had the privilege of speaking with Lori Davies a few times. And we love this community. One of the things that I haven't heard mentioned is that this homeless encampment is really walking distance from our newly renovated Crown Valley Park. And even tonight, as I was driving down Crown Valley from my home, there were kids out there playing soccer. And the safety issues, I know you're all well-aware of that. And that is just one of the things that I wanted to bring up, is that nobody had mentioned the park. The other thing, and I'll try to be brief, is I love walking in St. Clemente and down in Dana Point. And I used to walk the River Trail, Sycamore Creek Trail, down in Dana Point. The last time I did, there were probably six or seven men camped out on the trail. And I was with a friend and we had dogs with us. We went down to Dohoney Beach, came up across the pedestrian bridge, and were startled by a homeless man actually camped out on the bridge. And I agree with what some of the previous speakers have said, that there's no way that these people are gonna stay in this encampment. I've done work events down in Laguna Beach during the day. And the number of people who are just lying around on the beach or sitting on sidewalks, Dana Point, up in the park, it's a terrible situation. And I know in St. Clemente that they've had a lot of issues down at North Beach by the train station. And so thank you so much for being proactive. And I know that you'll do what's right for our city. Thank you.
Heidi Knove, Ken Mann, Bill Richardson, James Hardy. And sir, before you start, there are people still standing, but there's some empty seats over here if you'd like to sit down. Okay, sir. Your name, please?
Bill Richardson. I am a Laguna Niguel resident, 20 years. I'm a native of Orange County. Born and raised in Orange. Moved here 20 years ago. I appreciate the meeting that you're holding, special meeting. There's been a lot of talk about safety. And it's clear to me that the Board of Supervisors, but one, didn't give enough thought to safety. I'd like to take a different tack on that. Did you consider the many tens of millions of dollars that the county could possibly pay for your negligence if a little child is raped? Please give that thought. There's a different side of this as well. You are all risk managers in the decision to make. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Hardy. I live at Levin-Seleno, of course, here in Laguna Niguel. My wife Diane and I have resided in Laguna Niguel for 25 years. We've raised our two children here. It's a wonderful, diverse community. And it's been said much better than I can say tonight, but we want to keep it that All the obvious things, it's gonna be a sanitation nightmare, a health nightmare, and a crime nightmare if this happens. And there's nothing temporary about it. I called Todd Spitzer today. I thanked him for his no vote. I called Representative Supervisor Bartlett's phone and no one answered. I called Mr. Doe, I believe is his name, and also Steele. And it's coincidental, but I don't think any of those three live in Irvine, Huntington Beach, or Laguna Niguel. Thank you very much.
Wendy Mall, Vivian Guant, Lorena Masbaum, and Ann Garrett. Have you filled out a gold slip?
I have not.
Okay, if you could please fill one out and I'll call the remaining people. Randy Kuda and Nick Serneca. Are either of them here? Okay, Nick, come on up to the mic.
Hello, thank you, Council for having us here. I'm gonna read off my phone.
Microphone, please.
My name is Nick Serneca. I've lived in Laguna Niguel since 1992. I was born and raised here. I went to Molton Elementary and Elisa Niguel High School. I'm gonna touch on two topics, first adding depth to the safety concern, and then why not Laguna Niguel? So I first moved away from Laguna Niguel for college, where I went to Sacramento State, which is a place with one of the highest homeless populations in the nation. This provided me with firsthand experience living in an area affected by homelessness, which is really far too graphic to describe publicly in an ordinary situation. But this isn't an ordinary situation. So I'm gonna touch on a few of those. My first time seeing someone who has overdosed on drugs, lying lifeless on the bike trail I used to go to school. My first time having a glass bottle thrown at me. The first time I've had to run from another person attempting to harm in me. You get the idea? Now, I'm sure it wasn't when it was first proposed that Sacramento support a homeless population, that these problems didn't occur in this magnitude. Because this problem is gradual. And these are experiences that this decision will eventually subject our children to. Secondarily, it must be understood and agreed upon that any solution addressing an issue such as this begins with containment and then prevention. With that said, Laguna Niguel is a master-designed city with over 30% of our land dedicated to open spaces and community parks. This creates the least controllable environment in all of Orange County to locate a homeless population, whom will of course inhabit those spaces. This means that areas of increased risk to public safety will be expanded, while also creating the perception that the capacity to sustain larger populations is feasible. And therein lies the slippery slope, that if we allow this to begin, that it will not lose momentum nor end. This is an a priori voting issue, meaning that we have to first consider areas of greatest containment as most suitable environments for these populations. And to ignore that is simply reckless disregard for common sense planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Madrigal, Kevin Stein, and Kurt Meyer.
I'm Jason Marishall. Sorry for the poor writing.
Or the poor reading on my part.
No, I think it's on me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I want to read, you know, we don't have a lot of experience with homeless people in Laguna Niguel, but Santa Ana does. And so recently, when Santa Ana allowed for the zoning of homeless shelters and industrial areas, they said it couldn't be within 100 feet of residents, parks, childcare centers, or schools. Because those are best practices for homeless shelters. If we had a bingo card with worse practices for homeless shelters, I think that you would have scored a bingo on that one. So I would encourage the City Council to act on information like this. I have two daughters that go to Molton Elementary School, and I'm the Traffic and Safety Chair at Molton Elementary School. So usually, we're worried the kids are gonna get run over when they're crossing the street and stuff like that. I never thought that I would have to talk to Jackie Campbell, our awesome principal there, about issues related to safety, related to homeless people that are at a site that's really inappropriate, where they're further away from services and closer to areas where safety becomes a big concern. Let's look for a site where best practices apply rather than worst practices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Stein, and I appreciate your time tonight. I would like to say a couple things. One, I feel really old, because I've owned a property in Laguna Niguel for 30 years. And I don't feel that old, but I must be that old. Secondly, I've raised three kids, and we've done a tremendous amount of volunteerism. Madam Mayor, you asked for fresh perspectives, so I'll offer a couple of those. Number one is, no one's talked tonight about the faith-based solutions. My wife and my family participated in the Salvation Army over the Christmas season. So there is an alternative method to this. My personal belief is government is not the answer. There is a much better solution. Secondly, many of you look familiar. And the reason why is because I have participated for the last seven or eight years in the Laguna Niguel Parade. You might know me as the Chief Pooper Scooper, because I follow the Horse Patrol and I clean up after them. I will tell you, I will gladly clean up after horses.
I thought that was our job, by the way.
But I want no desire in cleaning up over the homeless people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Meyer. As you can probably tell, I didn't grow up in Laguna Niguel. But I chose to move here because it's close to the beach. It's a beautiful area. And it seems like a safe place for me and my family. I'm gonna tell you now what's going on is pre-homeless encampment. I walk my dog every morning up Marina Hills, around the shopping center. And when I do, I've now started carrying a little plastic milk jug with me. So I can carry back to the trash the open, exposed hypodermic needles that are sitting out on the grass currently. I've spent time up in San Francisco on business. I go to Denver on business. Their homeless situation is exploding, not slowing down. I just earned $15 a day for the past five days on jury duty at the Santa Ana courthouse. One of those days, the bailiff instructed us not to go out of the back of the courthouse because if we did, we would be walking into the center, the center, mind you, of a homicide investigation that incurred the night before in the homeless encampment. Do not for one second think that that will not and could not happen here. I am very, very open and want to respond to the needs of the homeless people. There are facilities. There is care available now. It does not have to come from that encampment there. There's a couple of you guys here. Do you guys feel underworked currently?
You have 20 seconds.
I'm gonna take probably about 30. But I guarantee you, don't. These people here pay taxes. You all pay taxes. If I need these gentlemen at my home, I want them to be able to respond, not have to worry about what's going on in a homeless encampment that should not be in this community to begin with. My only other thing that I'm going to say, I'm glad you showed up tonight, because a lot of people wouldn't have. You got battered pretty good, but thank you for showing up and having the courage to do that. That's my time. That's my time.
Bob Burns. You're the last one.
It's been a long night. My name is Bob Burns. I've been living in Laguna-Negale now since 1990. I'm a captain in the U.S. Merchant Marine, so I come and go quite a bit. It kind of gives me a perspective to see how things change from voyage to voyage, and this is pretty drastic. You know, I've traveled to countries all over the world, China quite often, the PRC, Public Republic, People's Republic of China, Taiwan, Japan, Korea, Germany, Norway, I could go on and on. I can tell you there's a much bigger issue going on here, from my perspective, anyway. And what's, that perspective represents is that the amount of resistance that this community puts up to this event is being measured at a very high level and at a very deep level. I'm sure you can understand the, the difference between the two particular dynamics, the deep level and the high level. And it's going to be very important to demonstrate that this community is not going to put up with this kind of a blindsided activity. You have to ask yourself the question, why all of a sudden we're, we are expected to accept this kind of a blasphemy to our community? It's the same type of thing that's going on in Germany. It's the same type of thing that was attempted to go on in Hungary. Now, when I was in Budapest recently, they made a point that that kind of a blasphemy was not going to take place, and it didn't. And that's the kind of point we have to make now. It's a much bigger slippery slope than you could ever imagine. Once this homeless dynamic fails, who do you think's going to replace them? And where are they going to live? It'll go from your backyard to your patio, and then you'll be renting them a room. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. And we do have one more speaker, Jackie Hall.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Just very briefly, first of all, everything that was said here is spot-on, and very intelligent thought have gone into all these remarks that have been made tonight. I wanted to speak because I personally have experienced, every day I go to LA, because I commute, and I hear, I'm here because it's such a lovely environment to live. I see homeless people on the street. They accost people in their cars. I recently had an experience where I was approaching a red light. I saw a man, and I had to turn my head. He was about to urinate, and I was highly offended. I turned the other way. I've seen men run naked in the streets. It's horrific. I don't want to be exposed to this, but they're there. And there's another thing that wasn't mentioned here earlier tonight. These homeless people, when they come down here and they have access to the free trolley, they'll be going to Dana Point and Laguna Beach and to our beaches, and a lot about those needles that could be left in the sand for our children and our friends and, and for those of us that walk on the beach, could accidentally step on a needle. I mean, that's a very real possibility, and it's a huge, huge issue. You can even drive to some areas in LA, and they, they are very aggressive. They will come to your car with the windows up and hammer the car. I've seen it personally. I have seen it on a regular basis, and if we invite this down here, I can tell you, they do also network with one another. When they see how nice it is, it is down here, they'll be bringing others along. And, and you are correct. They will not stay in these camps. Many of them do not wish to be in a camp, and they certainly don't want services, as it was pointed out earlier. What they do want is to come and go freely, have access to, easy access to valuables, where they can fund their habits, because many of them are mentally unstable, unpredictable, and they're doing these drugs, which we all talked about earlier. It's a terrible idea. It was so, like many, I was so upset last night. I didn't even work today, and I actually called a Realtor. That's how concerned I was. I live up on the hill, just down the street from this. I don't want, I will not shop here. I will not walk here. It's a danger for this community and its residents. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you. Okay, thank you to all the residents for coming. This is what is so great about Laguna-Negale, is our residents coming out, participating, working together like a community. Your city council is outraged as you are, and we are working for you. We will be discussing this and what our actions are going to be in our special meeting. Right now, public comments are closed. We will be taking a not more than five-minute health break. For those of you that, if this is your first time in City Hall, welcome. If you need to use the restrooms, make a right, go towards the reception desk, and a right. And, and we do hope that you will stay for the rest of the meeting to see what your city council does on a regular basis and tend to the business of the city. So we will see you back here in less than five minutes. Thank you. Okay, we will resume our meeting. Thank you so much to those of you who are staying. It is nice to have people out in the audience watching what their city council is doing and being part of our meeting. Just wanted to share a piece of information with you. I know there was some question or concern that residents had seen some trucks on the property in question, and that was Maltin Niguel Water District Repairing a Valve, one of their contractors. So, that's why those trucks were there. Okay, so, we're moving on to our consent calendar, items 1 through 11. Okay, I would like to pull item number 11 for an amendment. Are there any other items that need to be pulled for comment or discussion?
Madam Mayor, the only one is I have to abstain from item number six. The construction in question is within 500 feet of my home, and I want to make sure that I'm outside that distance. So, I'm abstaining on number six.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, I'd make a motion to move the balance.
Well, wait. Councilmember Minigar?
Yes, before you do so, I wanted to pull item number one, actually to recuse myself for the item 95988, and I'm okay with all the rest of the items within item number one. It's the warrant registries for potential conflict that I talked to our city attorney.
Okay, so, there's one item on the warrant register that you are abstaining from.
Potential conflict, yes.
So, you're abstaining from.
Yes.
Are you pulling any other items from the consent calendar?
No, they're fine.
Councilmember Lindholm. Councilmember Davies.
So, I'll second that motion to approve the remaining consent.
Okay, and who made the motion? Okay, Mayor Protem Jennings moved that we approve the balance of the consent calendar, seconded by Councilwoman Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carries. Please note the abstention of Councilman Jennings on item number six, excuse me, Mayor Protem, and on Councilmember Minigar on that one item on the warrant register. On item number 11, the amendment is to, this is the item which is the approval of the annual resolutions and proclamations. One of them was not included on the list, and that should be, and it was in your red folder, April 22, 2018, as Earth Day. So, is there a motion to approve item number 11 as amended?
I'll make a motion.
I second the motion.
Moved by Councilmember Davies, seconded by Councilmember Minigar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, carries. Okay, that's the consent calendar. Okay, we are moving on to finance, item number one. And this is our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also affectionately known as the CAFR, and the related audit reports for the City of Laguna Niguel for fiscal year 2016 to 2017. City Manager Ridge, can you please provide us with the staff report?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members, this item before you is the approval of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or as the mayor mentioned, better known as the CAFR, along with related audit reports for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. A detailed presentation of this report was presented to the IBNA Committee by both our Finance Director, Mr. Erlinson, and our independent auditors from the Poon Group. The IBNA Committee unanimously approved the reports and recommended forwarding them to city council for final approval. We are a little tardy at completing all of the steps necessary to issue this very comprehensive and voluminous report. That said, the report has some very positive news for the city, which prides itself on its fiscally conservative principles and extremely healthy reserves. While I don't want to take a significant amount of time in light of the issues before you tonight, I would like to share some of the most key results documented in these reports. Financial statements were given a clean opinion, meaning the audit determined they are fairly presented in all material respects. Actual general fund revenues exceeded expenditures by 8.6 million, allowing for even more planned investments in capital projects. Total reserves are nearly 72 million, and the net position of the city is 636 million, and that is basically the value of the assets over the liabilities. The majority, of course, are in our investments in our infrastructure. There is a significant amount of information contained in these reports, very important information, including notes to the financials, required supplemental information, and detailed statistical information. I would like to recognize our Finance Director, Mr. Erlinson, and his team, as well as our independent auditors, the Poon Group, for all of the work that they've done on this. And they're both here to answer any questions that you may have. If not, I would recommend that we accept the filing and approval of last year's CAFR report.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on this item? Okay, is there a motion to approve finance item number one, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and related audit reports of the City of Laguna Niguel for the fiscal year 2016-2017?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protem Jennings.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and our last item of business for this evening is the Community Development Item Number One. This is the expedited permitting procedures for small residential rooftop solar energy systems and for electric vehicle charging stations. Planning Manager Morgan, please provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The agenda item is the introduction of ordinances to add provisions to the city's municipal code to formally establish streamlined expedited processes for both residential rooftop solar systems and charging stations for electric vehicles. This is per Assembly Bill 2188 and 1236, respectively. Both assembly bills are intended to further the state's policy of promoting and encouraging the use of energy-efficient technologies. As outlined in the staff report, the city's building division's current permitting procedures for these types of submittals already is largely consistent with both state bills. This notably includes expedited plan review and processing of these applications administratively as non-discretionary permits. To be in complete compliance, however, it is necessary for the city to prepare an expedited plan review checklist for these types of permits and to create a process for electric online application submittals. With these changes, adoption of the proposed ordinances is largely a matter of affirmatively complying with current state legislation. These changes are set to be in place by the building division within 14 days of ordinance adoption. And in closing, staff recommends that the council introduce the proposed ordinance and agendaize both of them for the April 3 city council meeting for adoption. That concludes staff's presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Are there any questions on this item? Councilmember Minigar?
Yes, just a very quick question for John. In your preparing the report for the first reading on this ordinance, did you survey other cities with regard to this proposed process protocol for our city?
We sure did, yes. Yeah, so, the ordinance is modeled after several other local cities that have prepared similar ordinances for both electric vehicle charging and for the rooftop solar.
And when you contacted, when you performed the survey, you asked them about the pros and cons of this pursuit, just to make sure that since we are limiting, we're reducing the amount of time to expedite the process for the residents, then we are not going to be encountering any of those potential problems that they've had. I presume those cities happen to be in Orange County, correct?
Correct, yeah. Most of our surrounding cities, and we are already following through with that process of expedited review. So, our typical plan check review time is 10 days, but for solar, that is reduced to five days. That's also partly due just to the quantity of solar permit requests we get. And then for electrical vehicle charging stations, those are done over the counter. So, that is existing, that is our existing practice. So, there will be no change in terms of the timeframe. Really, the only thing that's substantively changing is we do need to adopt a formal checklist, which we're in the process of doing, and there are some state guidelines for that, and we've already been surveying some of our surroundings, neighboring cities. And then also to provide for electronic submittal, which is something we're working on now.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve the item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we need to.
Excuse me.
Okay, we need to read the item.
Thank you.
Yes. So, who would like to read? Councilwoman Davies.
Okay, I'm just going to be reading the recommendation. And do I need to, can I just go into the ordinance, or?
At this point, you're going to introduce the ordinance, the two ordinances, by reading the full title of each of the ordinances.
Okay, so, A, ordinance number 2018-XXX, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Laguna Niguel, California, adding Article 11 of Division 1 of Title 8 to the Laguna Niguel Municipal Code to provide an expedited streamlined, this is when I needed my glasses too, I was going to read there, permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems. And then ordinance number 2018-XXX, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Laguna Niguel, California, adding Article 12 of Division 1 of the Title 8 to Laguna Niguel Municipal Code to provide an expedited streamlined permitting process for the installation of electric vehicles charging station. B, waive the reading of the full text of the proposed ordinance, require a majority vote. C, consider the proposed ordinance and make any desired change to them. And D, direct that the proposed ordinance with any changes to them be placed on the agenda for the April 3, 2018, city council meeting and adopt the ordinance at that meeting.
Second.
Well, I believe Councilwoman Lindholm already seconded it.
Third.
It could be the third. We don't want any of the fourth, okay.
Reinforcement.
Okay, so, it's been moved by Councilmember Davies, seconded by Councilmember Lindholm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Okay. Now, on to other business and council reports. So, there are no ad hoc committee reports today, and I believe council, we made our comments during or prior to public communications. So, we'll move on to city manager and department reports. And I don't see any heads up, oh, you're going to start over here. Director Abazadeh.
Bunny blast this Saturday, 9:00 AM. Thanks.
That's it? Okay, usually we have more from Parks and Rec. City Clerk Gomez. Okay, Mr. Halsey.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Morgan.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Musbooti. Director Roseberry. City Attorney Dixon.
No.
Director Erlinson. Chief McDaniel.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
City Manager Ridge.
I'm not going to be the only one, so nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. This concludes our regular city council meeting, which is adjourned at 10:17 PM. Do not leave your seats. And at this time, I would like to call our special city council meeting for closed session and call this meeting to order at 10:17 and a half PM. Okay.
Madam Mayor, may we have the pictures back up for this meeting?
Okay, City Clerk Gomez, can you do that?
Yes.
Thank you. And can you call roll at the same time?
I sure can. Councilmember Lindholm?
Here.
Councilmember Davies?
Here.
Councilmember Minigar?
Present.
Mayor Protem Jennings?
Here.
And Mayor Genaway?
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
So, at this point, we open public communications. I know many of our residents were here earlier tonight. The council also made comments earlier tonight on the homelessness issue, which is the purpose of this special meeting. City Clerk Gomez, are there any request to speak slips?
No, Mayor, there are no requests to speak.
There are no, and are there any additional comments? So, public communications is now closed. At this time, I would like to have City Attorney Dixon read us into closed session.
Yes, Mayor Genaway, members of the council, we have a closed session scheduled for tonight. That closed session is on the potential initiation of litigation, and it, as is indicated on the agenda, concerns the issues that were discussed earlier concerning county actions and the prospective establishment of a homeless camp at the South County Court outside. I expect there may be a matter to be reported out at the end of the closed session.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney Dixon. We'll now recess to closed session.